All right, welcome to the April 9th Board's Regular Board Meeting here at Hubble Middle School. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Ms. Rutherford, do you lead us in the pledge?
I would lead you, people of the United States of America, and to the right of what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. It's Communication with the Host School. Would you please introduce Dr. John Pilkington? Sorry, John.
I would be happy to. So, proud to introduce Dr. Pilkington, who is the proud principal, Hubble Middle School. We've, I think, as a board, had a lot of board meetings here for a little window of time. I haven't been back in a little while, so Dr. Pilkington, I'm happy to be back at Hubble and would invite you to introduce your superstar students who are going to kick us off tonight.
Certainly will do. Welcome to Hubble Middle School. Welcome back to Hubble Middle School. School Board members, our senior leadership team, Dr. Schuler, and our student ambassadors and community members, we're happy to have you back at Hubble. I would like to introduce to you tonight two very exceptional and special eighth-grade students who are going to be highlighting their experiences as part of our Student Ambassador Leadership Team, and they'll be able to explain a little bit about what that is, the leadership program that we have here at Hubble. They've been part of it, both of them, for two years, correct? Seventh and eighth grade, and they're very excited to share their experiences with you tonight. This is Gracie May Bizarrok and Kendall Woods.
My name is Gracie May Bizarrok, and I'm in eighth grade at Hubble Middle School. I'd like to thank Dr. Pilkington, Mr. Simpson, Ms. Virga, Dr. Schuler, and the District 200 School Board for allowing me to speak tonight. I really love the Hubble community and have gotten involved in cross-country, track and field, the plays and musicals, Fellowship of Christian Students Club, Battle of the Books, and last but not least, SALT. SALT stands for the Student Ambassador Leadership Team, and it is a club at Hubble available to seventh and eighth graders who want to learn more about the leadership and want to take on roles that make a positive impact around the school. SALT students, or Salteens, get it, are recommended by teachers and then selected by the club's sponsors after all the recommendations are in. SALT is a special club for several reasons. For one, SALT is student-led. This means that our sponsors often step out of the picture and let the students take charge. This gives students opportunities to take on the responsibilities of various leadership roles within the club. While in SALT, members have a chance to converse with others, stretch their comfort zones, and pursue their strengths in a welcoming group setting. SALT also helps our future. Club members can apply what we learned in SALT to real-world activities and jobs. The results often show that we can handle commitment quite well, sometimes better than some adults. The club meets every Monday, and during meetings, we watch inspirational videos and do group activities focused on different topics such as human development, herd mentality, SEL, time management, leadership, values, classroom culture, communication, taking care of others, and positivity. Salteens help out when needed in our school by doing things such as giving tours to new students, but our biggest event is the annual talent show we run. It allows us to showcase responsibility, leadership, and organization while pulling the Hubble community together to raise awareness and money for a good cause. The talent show is a long process. We start by putting together task groups such as who will emcee, who will help out backstage, and who is best at marketing. We host an info meeting for all students who want to participate. Then, we hold talent auditions and establish our acts. We run rehearsals, continue marketing, and focus on logistics such as blocking, lighting, and sounds. We sell raffle tickets and charge an entrance fee. This year, all money raised went to the humanitarian service project. Kendall and I were the directors of the talent show this year, and it was both challenging and rewarding to demonstrate our leadership skills in a real-world setting. We had to be ready to work together for a common goal and solve problems on the fly, but I think we learned a lot and are now prepared to use our skills in many other situations. This year and last year, we raised a total of $2,400 for Ronald McDonald House and the humanitarian service project. Overall, I think that the best things about SALT are the lessons that I've learned. I would encourage all students who want to help and lead others to give SALT a try. The lifelong skills I've gained will be so beneficial in high school, specifically during educational group assignments, influential opportunities on sports teams, and participating in District 200 clubs that assist our community. Beyond high school, I'm ready to take on leadership roles in college and my professional career, all because of the experiences I've had through SALT. Thank you.
My name is Kendall Woods, and I am an eighth grader who was a part of SALT Club, which is the Student Ambassador Leadership Team here, like Gracie May said. SALT Club is an after-school program here where we are mentored to be leaders and are taught how to handle tough situations. When I was in sixth grade, I had just moved from Chicago to Warrenville. At my elementary school in Chicago, I was put down for standing up for myself and others and for trying to express my emotions. I joined SALT in seventh grade, and it helped me gain an open space to share my ideas and feelings with others. SALT Club helped me learn how to control my emotions better and how to be a more helpful person. It has also taught me how not to just be the one who leads, but also how to take a step back and let others have a chance to thrive. SALT Club has also helped the Hubble community grow by giving the students a voice in things we want and by changing the social culture of our school. Us at SALT Club strive to make our school community a more welcoming place where everyone feels like they belong. One of my favorite things about SALT is that even after a long day of school, when I feel completely drained, I can walk into our club room and feel re-energized with all the positive energy and ideas we all bring to the table. Now, while we all bring some pretty big ideas to the table, sometimes we end up mainly focusing on the idea we think is correct or even our own idea. But at the end of the day, there are no bad ideas. There are only plans that haven't been finished, yet. With all of our big ideas, we have been able to do some pretty amazing things when we put them all together, like putting on an amazing talent show called Hubble Havoc, where people weren't afraid to show who they really are and what they could do. At our talent show, we were able to raise a substantial amount of money for a charity that helps people in need. Seeing all of our ideas come together and to make something that would help bring the community together is one of the biggest rewards I could ever gain from SALT. With the skills I have gained from SALT, I know that in high school and beyond, I would be able to apply them to any difficult situation I may come by and handle them honorably and respectfully. For example, me and Gracie May are student directors in this year's spring musical called Matilda. We are able to apply the skills we learned in SALT to work with the cast and crew to put on an amazing show. SALT is an amazing club that anyone who is looking for a chance to give themselves a voice should definitely join. Now, while it is only available for seventh and eighth graders, sixth graders should still take an active role in our school by supporting each other and lifting each other up. We all know it only takes one person to inspire other people to make a change. SALT has changed mine and countless other lives for the better, and I hope that I will continue to do that for years to come.
Our SALT Club has replaced what, in the past, was more traditional as student council, and the difference is it gives students really hands-on experiences and real leadership training, and they get to use that in the real world. So, very proud of Gracie May and Kendall and the others in the club. Thank you to Trevor Simpson and Caitlin Virga, our staff advisors, who have done an incredible job creating the club and sustaining it over all these years. They did a great job. That was fantastic. Best part of the night. We should just go. Awesome job. Board members, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight? All right?
Rob, I just have one thing I want to share with the board. So, we're going to move Oral Report Number Four. That's the department update from Mr. Spencer up in front of Action Item Number Four. There's a series of action items that kind of follow, I think, the information that would be shared, so there's not a real modification that has to be made to the agenda, but I just want to acknowledge, we're going to do that Oral Report first in front of those action items.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Recognitions and achievements. Dr. Schuler, could you introduce those being recognized, please?
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to continue our community partner recognition this evening. I've got two special guests that we invited earlier in the year to join us, and this was a meeting that could happen. A little bit of context, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Smith to come up and share a little bit of additional information. So, Cody and Rob both work with Acxiom Media. They've been a tremendous partner with the district in a lot of our work for a long period of time. They've helped us with some videos, some engagement stuff that we've done, and so, as, again, the board has heard before, as we've expanded some of our student internship opportunities, especially through the social media marketing place, it was a natural place for Ian, I think is probably one of his first calls to say, "Boy, do I have an idea for you." And Rob and Cody stepped up, have supported our internship program, have created a really, really valuable experience for our students, and I think have shared with Ian and shared with us that it was a really valuable experience for their company as well, seeing our students help and create and generate some ideas and content. So, we are so incredibly thankful to have Acxiom Media as a community partner, want to recognize them this evening. And Mr. Smith, would you mind coming up to the podium and just sharing a little bit about your experience in working with them?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Yeah, I'm thrilled that we're recognizing Rob Davidson and Cody Sumner from Acxiom Media Group. As you said, Dr. Schuler, they partnered with District 200 on a variety of different multimedia-type projects over the years, and everything they've done has been really great. You guys just do excellent work. I've just been so impressed with literally everything that I've seen them do. When I approached them about developing an internship experience for our broadcast media students, they were really eager to get involved. They basically just said, "Where do I sign up?" I mean, you know, just on the spot. So, this year, they took on not one, but two students. They had one in the fall, and they've got one currently right now in the spring, one from each campus, and those students have just had a tremendous experience, just doing a variety of different kinds of tasks and having opportunities to learn different, you know, kinds of equipment and things like that, and they've just gained some really valuable skills in all those areas. One of the students wrote the following note of appreciation. This was our fall student. "Thank you for giving me the opportunity to intern with Acxiom Media Group." Exclamation mark, lots of exclamation marks in this. "I really enjoyed my time there, and I learned a lot. I especially like learning about the hacks and shortcuts with editing." That sounds interesting. "This was a great, real-life, professional experience, so thank you, and I wish you all the best for you." So, that was a note of appreciation that they wrote to these two guys. You guys have seen that, but I just thought it was something that I'd like to share with everybody else. Rob, Cody, why don't you guys come up? Thank you for your partnership with us. I know it's a lot of time, it's a lot of resources, energy that you're devoting to our students, and we really, really appreciate it. Just want you to know that, and we just really enjoy working with you. So, thank you.
Our student programs are just so important. To have people from the community and the businesses around participate and welcome them in is, it's a gift, so thank you. On to public comment. Thank you for taking the time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school district, and community. It's the board's practice to not directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and the information explored. It is not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not have to reduce that time for each speaker. To maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we all treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name, and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Kullivitz will raise her hand when 15 seconds remains as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I will respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin. Thank you for investing time to attend the board meeting and share your thoughts and encouragement for our district. We have one public comment from Caitlin Virga.
Good evening, members of the board, district leaders, and community partners. My name is Caitlin Virga, and I'm proud to serve as one of the school psychologists at Hubble Middle School. I work specifically with sixth-grade students in our Essentials and Skills Programs. I'm here today to share a little bit of positive news about the great things happening here at Hubble. At Hubble, we believe school should be a place where students feel inspired, supported, empowered, and that belief comes to life every day through our culture, our programming, and most of all, our people. To give you an idea about the staff here, I transitioned to working at Hubble in the fall of 2020 in the middle of remote learning and mask mandates, and somehow, despite Google Meet Squares and face coverings, I've never felt more welcomed through a screen nor seen bigger smiles from behind a mask. That kind of warmth and connection, it's not accidental, it's our culture. One of the things that stands out most about our building is the way student voice drives the experience. We currently have 18 clubs and activities all launched through Student Initiative. That means our students aren't just participating in school culture, they're building it, and they're showing up. Ninety-four percent of our students are involved in at least one club, activity, or team. We've also had an amazing year in athletics. Our eighth-grade girls' basketball team clinched the IPAC Championship in an intense overtime win against Hadley. Our seventh-grade boys' basketball team also brought home the IPAC title with a huge victory over Glenn Crest. We had three champions and six individual medalists placed in the top four at the IPAC Wrestling Tournament and two IPAC Cross-Country Champions. Incredible participation across all intramurals and sports in general. Athletics continue to teach our students about teamwork, leadership, and perseverance. Beyond sports, the arts are thriving at Hubble. Our fall play, Transylvania, featured 104 students with 52 cast and 52 crew. Our upcoming musical, Matilda, will include an even larger team of 52 cast and 68 crew. Our library, programming, orchestra, chorus, and bands have had equally rich years, with everything from authors' visits to district festivals and grant-supported master classes. Hubble students also give back to their community. Through our Christmas-sharing pennyworth, our school raised over $1,000 to support local families during the holidays. You heard from Gracie May and Kendall earlier today, I am incredibly privileged to be a co-sponsor of the SALT Club, and they talked a little bit about the work that we do in there with our Hubble Havoc show and our 13-student performers. If you're a family whose children attend Hubble, I truly believe your students are being prepared for life beyond middle school. We serve a great population, and we're better because of the Huska community. Thank you for your attention tonight.
Thank you. I'll clap. It's great. All right, Superintendent Report. Dr. Schuler, do you have any topics you'd like to report to the board at this time?
Absolutely, but I'm going to start first, have them bring up the Student Ambassador Reports, and I'm going to let our ambassadors from north and south share their topics. We'll see which one comes up first. Looks like Wheaton-Mooreville South. All right.
All right. So, got a lot of academic highlights at Wheaton-Mooreville South, so I'll start you off hot here. So, first off, oh, of course, there we go. So, sophomore Carter Holt was awarded the Leadership Team Student of the Month. It's everyone's favorite time of the year. Now that we're wrapping up, it's standardized testing time, so everyone's warming up for the ACT and pre-ACT coming up. It's next week for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, so we're wishing them all the best of luck. So, we just started our applications for the 2025-2026 Student Ambassadors, so they're the guys who will sadly replace us, but I know we've been, you know, cool and all, but it's time to move on. So, that involves an application and an interview process, so we're excited to see where that goes. We're also giving out our achievement awards soon, so it's students who are high academic achievers. They get a certificate and recognition. Our Breakfast of Champions is hosted on April 17th, and that's when some teachers, I believe, nominate some students, and they're recognized and celebrated in the LLC. Coming up is also our National Honor Society Induction, and that's on May 1st, and that consists of students who have applied, have a 3.7 or higher cumulative GPA, involvement in at least two school-sponsored clubs or activities a year, have two examples of leadership, and have 40 hours of community service for junior applicants and 50 hours for senior applicants. So, last year, we actually had 94 inductees, so we're hoping for even more this year. And then to wrap it up here, everyone's focusing on finishing out the year strong and prepping for their AP exams, and they start on May 5th and continue through the 15th.
Talking about, a little bit about our extracurriculars here, our Wheaton United Lacrosse, both boys' and girls' teams, had their season openers and won. The idea of drafting regional champions, our very own Max Dudik and Jackson. We had second-place Alyssa, third-place Kayla and Simon. Our Color Guard team performed at the Midwest Color Guard Championships at Victor Andrew High School. Our Group Interpretation, or GI for short, went to state after placing second in Sectionals, and our Black Student Alliance, or BSA, club sponsored a drive for the Metropolitan Family Services, and they collected five or more, I believe, boxes worth of donations.
All right. Looking at our arts and our social category, we hosted a winter recognition and spring kickoff parade for all of our activities. We, it consisted of show choir, gymnastics, wrestling, anything you can pretty much think of. And then I'm going to spend some biased attention on show choir. We just completed our choral classic, and we were happy to see some of our board members there, so thank you for showing up and showing out. And this weekend, we're hosting our second fundraiser of the year, cabaret, where both of our groups learn a second set in addition to our competition performance, and we also highlight the middle school choirs who will perform alongside of us, and that's going to be April 11th and April 12th this weekend. We also have the Special Games hosted by Wheaton North, so thank you for hosting. We also had our South Side Band Festival, which will be on April 16th to highlight our band members, and we're also hosting a mother-son brunch at the Metinaw Country Club on April 27th, just to give our students and the additional time to connect with their mothers, as is very important, of course. And then we also had our Future Marching Band Signing Day to welcome in our middle school members matriculating into the high school, and that was on March 27th.
As you can see, this is quite the list. This is just a short list, well, not short, list of our winter accomplishments for the community to view and board members to recap on as they wish. And then, in addition to that, we have all of our spring activities and sports that kicked off, and this was highlighted during the parade throughout the school that Caitlin touched on. And these are just a couple pictures. As you can see in that bottom corner right there, we got our very own Max Dudik. And then, just a couple other pictures. We've got our Leadership Team Student of the Month, marching band, lacrosse, color guard, and GI.
So, from Wheaton North's side, our Wheaton North Varsity Choir went to Europe over spring break, going to many different cities, Vienna, Prague, and Budapest. Our competition, Silent Sky, we did really well at Sectionals, and we had a couple of our actors qualify for the All Sectionals cast. And then our Sound of Music, we have our Invited Adjudication, April 13th, this Sunday, so that'll be exciting, and then curtains open the 24th to the 26th, so buy a ticket. This is our Varsity Choir group. And then, we have Lit Fest, we are hosting April 17th to look forward to, and we had a very successful blood drive today.
So, then, our Youth and Government also attended our Springfield Assembly, so the picture, we have a little Wheaton North, Wheaton South crossover with Lauren, because we're both in Youth and Government, so that was fun. We had really impressive performances from the judicial and the legislative side. On the judicial side, attorney Isabel Lindsay and Corey Ostenson earned fourth overall in their oral arguments and their bench memo, and then Brianna Elmer and I got first overall with our bench memo and oral arguments, and then our clerk bailiffs, Jonathan Boyce and Miriam Mer tied for second place, and they got 20 out of 25 on their speeches. And then we also had a legislative team get their bill passed by both the House and the Senate, but it was unfortunately rejected by the governor. This team of Japhet, Marlin, Kevin, and Henry Welsh, they wrote a bill requiring the State of Illinois to maintain free, high-speed wireless internet across poverty zones. So, it was a really good idea. It got third in priority, but, like I mentioned, unfortunately, the governor did not pass it. But that was a fun experience for students. And then also, our spring athletics are in full swing now that we're back from spring break, so track started their season. Boys Lacrosse started with a win against Batavia of 17 to 0. Baseball played Conant last night, and I think they tied 2 to 2, I believe. Badminton won against St. Charles North 9 to 6. Our softball team went to Tennessee over spring break, and that was fun, and when they got back, they won against Glenbard West 5 to 2. And then our hockey team also went to Nationals and ended up getting second overall.
Awesome. Don't say that's it. That was a whole lot, so appreciate that. Couple of other updates that I will add into that. Board members in your folder, you do have a chart that just highlights some activities still coming up here in the spring. Couple of them in particular that I want to point out and just make sure you have on your calendar. Appreciate the partnership both with our PTA Council and our Student Excellence Foundation. PTA Council is doing their Scholarship Recognition Breakfast on April the 30th at 9:30. Again, we appreciate their support year-round for all of our programs, but especially this special opportunity to honor some of our seniors with scholarships. The evening of April 30th, the Student Excellence Foundation does its Celebrate Our Stars event. That's their opportunity to recognize some amazing educators across the district, but also volunteers, and they do give out some scholarships as part of that event as well, so really fun event. That same day, April 30th, a little bit earlier in the morning at 8:30, our business incubator programs are doing their final pitch competition, so tremendous opportunity for folks in the community that might wish to see them, phenomenal projects. They start at 8:30. I think they are at Wheaton-Mooreville South this year in the auditorium community, certainly welcome. Also want to just mention, highlight that on May the 1st and May the 2nd, students that are in our Educator Pathway Program are also doing a signing day. So, students that have gone through the Future Educator Class and have pledged or committed that they're going to continue to study education in college and pursue a teaching degree will participate in a signing program as well, where we both recognize them, and certainly as Mr. Biskin and his team in Human Resource continue to try to build that out into a recruiting strategy, one of the other things we do give to the students is a certificate that one will guarantee them a student teaching placement in District 200 and an interview if we have a position for which they will be qualified when they graduate. So, important for us to bring that full circle. So, again, please consider those events, and then, as we get a little further out into May at our next board meeting, we'll highlight the very end of the year, exciting activities with graduation and all that, but I don't want our ambassadors to get too excited just yet, so we'll wait till the next meeting.
Can I ask you two questions?
Sure can.
The graduation, I noticed, the time's a little later. Is that venue, or is that...
Venue. So, College of DuPage has their graduation the day before, and initially, as we worked with them, they actually didn't want us to use the facility at all on our graduation day, but thanks to some keen negotiating by Mr. Biskin and our high school teams, they've agreed to give us that date, but we did have to push the times back a little bit.
I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah.
But then the June 25th Special Board of Education...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. No, it's not, it's not it. I think she was saying pusher button, sorry. We have two extra meetings that we're scheduling that are going to align with when bids will come in on Project Issuance 2A and then 2B for our facilities work. They just don't align with your regular board meeting schedules, so we've scheduled some special board meetings. My anticipation is that those meetings will not be long. They should be pretty short meetings that'll really just focus on approving those bids when they come in.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I'm sorry, very last thing. My apology. This morning, the Illinois Association of School Administrators does an annual volunteer recognition, and each superintendent has a chance to bring two community volunteers. My guests this morning were married... My guests this morning were Mary Reynolds Kane and Rob Cronky, two community members very actively engaged and involved throughout our fall facilities work and actually engaged community volunteers on so many other fronts. Rob, obviously as a former teacher, but still involved with the Student Excellence Foundation. Mary Reynolds Kane is an active member of CAC. So I was pleased to bring both and recognize them in front of our county.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Onto the consent agenda. Those items include acceptance of gift Monroe Middle School, the Eagle Honor Awards, approval to post environmental biology textbook for community review, approval to post high school novels for community review, approval of resolution to the DuPage-West Cook Intergovernmental Agreement, approval of high school online courseware subscription, approval of incident IQ help desk and asset management software, approval of modifications to open, sorry, approval of modifications to the board operating principles, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of minutes, March 12th, 2025, regular meeting, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to November 2023 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Board, are there any items that members want removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
Well, and just to thank you for the generous gift that we're accepting this evening. Two, just want to mention that board members had an opportunity to ask and have a number of questions answered on consent agenda items. So thoroughly reviewed. And then third, just want to recognize that on the personnel report this evening, one of the employments that you're approving is Mr. Jordan Thors, who already works with the district but is sliding into a new position in our business office with the retirement of Mrs. Maher. So congratulations to Mr. Thors.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments?
Just a comment. For anyone on the board or in the community who hasn't looked at the novels for community review, I just think it's a very impressive mix of classics and modern literature. And the information provided indicates rationale as well as awards won by those novels, which I think is very helpful in understanding why they're part of the proposed list.
Thank you, Mr. Jerpy. Any other questions or comments? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jerpy. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
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 Yes. Onto action items. We're at the facilities approval, sorry, I apologize. We're on the facilities approval consent agenda. The items included in this consent agenda include approval of the ROE building permits for 2025 summer middle school capital projects, approval to release middle school capital project bid, project issuance 2A, administrative authority to purchase Monroe Middle School furniture through OMNIA Partners Purchasing Cooperative. Board, any items that members want removed from the facilities approval consent agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, all three of these items relate to our continued move forward with your middle school referendum project. So again, pleased to continue to see that work move forward.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments?
Sorry, just a quick question. So we approved, just a little quick recap, three issuance for bids. Approved the last one, or the first one of the last meeting, going out for bid on the second one tonight. I just think, you know, sometime in the near future, we're going to want to get a comprehensive, kind of updated, look at the budget. I know we were under budget a little bit on the last one. I think it's important before we receive bids the next time that we have Nicholas, I think Nicholas, but somebody come here and give us, give the board an update before we word the next contracts. I think that would be important for the board. I won't be around then, but just kind of a plug for that future agenda item.
Any other questions, board? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the facilities approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Yes. We're all having challenges tonight, aren't we? All right, we're on the action items. We have nine action items on the agenda tonight. So action item number one is approval of the amendment to the resolution authorizing the transfer of monies from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, actually, for action items one, two, and three, we'll still take each of the action items individually, but I'm just going to ask Dr. O'Keefe to set just a quick bit of context about all three of those items, so.
To set the stage for this, he worked with your legal team to make sure that all of this was squared away, and he'll give you a brief explanation of why we're doing what we're doing tonight.
Good evening. So just to kind of explain a couple of the resolutions that are up for approval tonight. Back in January at the regular board meeting, there were two resolutions that were approved. The first resolution that was approved was to move up to $6 million from our working cash fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. And the second resolution was to move that same dollar amount to capital projects. The purpose of those resolutions in January was to pay for expenditures related to the referendum that were not previously accounted for in the budget that was approved earlier in the fiscal year. Now that we have the bond proceeds to cover those expenditures, what we're looking for tonight is for those resolutions that were passed in January to now be rescinded so that we are able to move those funds back to our working cash to be used for our standard inter-fund loans that we have each spring, which will, which you will see be included into our Education Fund, a standard inter-fund loan.
Board, do you have any questions? I think we can ask questions. Let's do them one at a time, right? Let's do them one at a time. It's cleaner. All right. Board, are there any questions on action item number one? Hearing none. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the resolution authorizing transfer of monies from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Yes. Action item number two is approval of the amendment to the resolution authorizing the transfer repayable inter-fund loan from working cash fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. Dr. Schuler?
No.
No comments. Board, any questions? So board, I need a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the resolution authorizing the transfer repayable inter-fund loan from working cash fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kolevitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevitz?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes. Action item number three is approval of the resolution to authorize transfer repayable inter-fund loan from working cash fund to the Education Fund. Dr. Schuler?
No additional information.
Board, any questions or comments?
Just a comment. This is the typical thing we do every year to deal with the timing of the tax receipts. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions, board? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution to authorize transfer repayable inter-fund loan from working cash to Education Fund as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blatner. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, this is the place where we move the oral report four. So we'll move to oral report four, Department of Innovation and Technology Work Plan Update.
Thank you. I see Mr. Spencer's making his way up to the podium to provide this update, so I will hand it off to him.
Good evening, board. As I do every year, my attempt tonight is to give you an update for some of the bigger lifts that we've had in the Department of Innovation and Technology this year. So I'm only going to talk about those particular indicators in which there was substantial work in. So the first category, we're going to, I always divide the department into two categories, right? The innovation side and what I call the boxes and wires side. So the first half we're going to cover is the innovation side. So one of the areas that we really put a lot of work in this year was to, we always talk about, you know, one of our goals is identify the roles, digital tools, and the one-to-one environment in general have in support of learning acceleration. And one of the work plan goals was to evaluate the current one-to-one structure, particularly at the elementary level. To set some context, we went full one-to-one during the pandemic, right? And ideally, we probably would have went one-to-one. We would have liked to gone one-to-one under different circumstances. Under the pandemic, you know, we had a need for students to have devices in their hands, because obviously we were teaching remotely. But there are some things that we probably would have done differently had there not been an emergency to address first and foremost. So now that we are out of the pandemic and back to our regular kind of routine inside of our classrooms, we thought it would be beneficial, since we are now at a natural point where those Chromebooks that we bought during the pandemic are now up for renewal, to see what the one-to-one structure looks like at the elementary level. So here are some of the findings. So in your green folders, there's also a supplementary handout. It's this graphic here on the big piece of paper. But I've went ahead and summarized a lot of the information here on this slide. So in general, Chromebooks are used daily across the system. So they are getting use across grades one through five. Keep in mind that kindergarten is not one-to-one. Kindergarten has a, it's based on a ratio of students that are enrolled in any particular class. But it's usually a half-set of Chromebooks based on population in the class, maybe a little bit more depending on what needs they have. Those Chromebooks don't go home. In grades one through five, those Chromebooks do go home. So it is very hard to really nail down a specific amount of time that's spent on the Chromebook. And what I have done, you really have to look at a lot of different data points to try to come up with a ballpark figure. But what I've come up with is around 55 minutes a day is the average time spent on a Chromebook. Now, keep in mind, that's the whole day across all grades one through five. It is currently not exactly possible to drill down to specific grade levels at specific buildings. But I can tell you that in general, as you progress across grade levels, one through five, Chromebook usage increases, right? Not so much over 55 minutes. You don't see anything really over 55 minutes on average. But that is so much to say that fifth graders are using their Chromebooks more often than first graders, which we would probably expect. Parents do have the ability to limit at-home device usage through our content filter, Lightspeed. So all of our Chromebooks do have a number of content filters. We have our basic firewall. As soon as they connect to the internet, they have content filtering. YouTube has its own filtering. Google has its own filtering. And then on top of all of that, we have a very granular filter from a piece of software called Lightspeed. So as a district, we can set what types of content gets placed in front of students. But I think there's also an opportunity to continue to educate our community and our families that they too have the ability to control what content is on the device after school hours. So when school hours end, parents have the ability to outright pause the internet or turn off selected categories of content, the biggest of which is YouTube. One of the big decisions that we made with our leadership team, based on feedback that we heard from the community, from our teachers in the classroom, from our administrators who are leading our buildings, is that probably outside of games, one, a targeted distraction point, right? So when we probably all grew up and we were watching things, TV was probably the biggest thing that we used to view content. Today's student, they're not watching TV. They're watching YouTube. That's how they get their information. But it is probably a source of distraction, particularly at the younger levels. So starting with next school year, YouTube will be blocked in grades K through five. That doesn't mean that a student will never be able to watch a YouTube video. What that means is, is that there will not be independent access to YouTube. So if I'm a teacher in a fourth grade classroom and I have videos that I need to assign to students to watch as part of the curriculum, I can still post those videos to classroom for students to view. What this blockage does is it does not allow a student on their own to go to www.youtube.com and just kind of watch things on their own. So grades K through five will not have access to YouTube. Grades six through 12 will also now have the option to opt out of YouTube as well. So Google now requires parental consent for what they term additional services. One of those additional services is YouTube. So we just opened up returning student registration. So if a parent has a student in grades six through 12, they will now see a permission asking them if they want to opt out of having their student have access to YouTube. If a family has a student in grades K through five, they will not see that parental permission screen because we've already preemptively blocked it K through five. So as we talked with a number of people in our one-to-one cohort study, and on the top of this, this handout here, this graphic, I want to also reiterate that we engaged a number of different staff. So we made sure that we had input from every elementary building, every grade level, every elective, every support staff. So we really tried to be as comprehensive as we could with gaining feedback on what one-to-one and what it meant for students to walk around with devices in their hand and have them available for learning. So here are some of the things that we found as part of that research. A little while back, all of the elementary buildings have a blocked scheduling, meaning that at a particular grade level, all teachers are pretty much doing the same thing. So it would make it hard if we were to shift away from a traditional one-to-one structure, meaning that there was just one device per student and did something like a shared model or maybe carts that maybe a couple teachers shared. Anything that was kind of deviating from the traditional model would make it hard. Because if there was a unit of study that maybe required students to practice writing or typing an essay, all students are most likely handling that lesson at the same time. The biggest current use case for Chromebooks at the elementary level is computer literacy practice and supplemental skills practice. ISBE, believe it or not, has a set of computer literacy standards that start as early as kindergarten. So it is important that students... So it is important that students do have exposure to a device so that they can enhance those literacy skills as they progress through, through grade levels. Also, some of our multilingual and special ed population utilize these digital devices more so than other students because those are also the students who are probably also getting supplemental skills practice. So it is very helpful for those two particular populations to stay one-to-one because they have access to that supplemental practice at home as well. Something we have to keep in mind too is that standardized testing is now largely digital. And while you could probably come up with a, a shared model to, to have digital, you know, testing run, I think it is a, a, a big argument to be made that as students are practicing their computer literacy, that if we take consistent, consistent access away from a student on a Chromebook and then we expect them to now take a test on a Chromebook, it's really hard to divorce whether or not a student is knowing the material that the test is asking or if it's a barrier of them just not knowing how to type, how to navigate the screens, how to click on different things. So there really is a, a need to, to keep that practice going. One thing that we also would have, and we heard, is that e-learning plans obviously lean heavily towards every student having a device. So if there were any changes to a current one-to-one structure, we most likely would have to revisit what our e-learning plans look like. So one of the big topics of discussion mainly at our Citizens Advisory Committee really did surround the discussion of screen time. So as we really dove into some of the, the granular data of when students are on Chromebooks, how often they're on Chromebooks, what kinds of things they're doing on Chromebooks, really what it came down to was a discussion about screen time. And you might have, you know, heard me say in some other avenues that when we have a discussion about screen time, we can't stop the discussion on how many minutes a student spends on a screen. And I say that because there is a huge, huge, huge difference between active and passive screen time. So active screen time are things that students are doing to create connections in their brain and they're actively doing something to apply a skill, but they're doing it in a digital format. Passive screen time is what we want to lessen. That's the doom scrolling, that's just sitting watching YouTube videos and not really engaging with those videos. It's just letting things kind of pass your eyeballs and not really doing much with that. So it's really, really important that we discern the difference between those two versions of screen time. So we do want to increase the amount of active screen time that we have with students, but we want to decrease the amount of passive screen time that we have with students. And I think it's important that as we, as we talked with elementary staff members, when students are on Chromebooks, it's pretty active. There is a definite goal that teachers are having students do on their Chromebook. There is, you know, not a time where students are kind of just hanging around during class, having free, having free time, just kind of, you know, aimlessly watching or doing things that are not active on their Chromebook. So during school time, active screen time is pretty high. Now, the passive screen time, I think, is where we have an opportunity to engage our community and families. And one of the things that we're going to launch next year is a technology education committee. And this is one of the topics that we'll tackle with that group. Because I think part of the discussion comes with that passive screen time probably happens at home or it happens outside of school hours, right? So what kinds of things can parents do to decrease that amount of passive screen time when students aren't in class? So as I mentioned, generally, older students use Chromebooks more than younger students. And we will continue to educate families about their role in responsible screen time at home. It is really important that we do remind families that they have that, that ability in the Lightspeed Parent Portal to shut off the internet wholesale if they so wish. We've also partnered with PTAs to try and have them kind of promote this, this ability to families. So hopefully more families will continue to take advantage of that really important tool that we have. The last bit of information that I have on this particular topic of screen time is that out-of-school screen time tends to be right before school and right after school. So that might be students that, you know, are just waiting for the school day to start or maybe their, their school day has ended and they're kind of ready to wrap up, get picked up from, you know, school, go on a bus, wait for maybe an activity to start. But we don't see a high activity in, in like really off-hours of the night. So I know it was a concern by some of our, some of our community members that, you know, what time are our students kind of, you know, doing things? If it's outside of school, those are the two windows that we see the most activity. So moving on, we also talk about how an innovative one-to-one environment can create opportunities for students to increase their exposure to each of our Vision 2026 Portrait of a Graduate descriptors. And so as you've heard me many times this year, talk about one of the biggest topics that we have in education right now is artificial intelligence and what that looks like in a classroom. So last time I presented, we talked about just what AI was. And our initial goal was to get all of our staff members to have a common understanding of what it means when we say AI. But this year, what we've really tried to do is take that next step and do two things. One, we wanted to codify a list of guidelines about responsible and ethical use when it comes to AI. So also in your green folders is that document. So it's just titled Ethical Use and Guidelines Around the Use of AI. And so this is a staff and student-facing document. A lot of the guidelines apply to both groups. Some of the guidelines maybe only apply to staff, some of the guidelines might only apply to students. But it does identify what the audience is in each of those areas that you see on the list. So any one of our staff members who is using AI for their work is aware of this document. And particularly, I'll, I'll talk about what it means for some of our middle school classes, particular our high school students. They are also aware of this document. So what we've also done is try to decide what do we want to do next around AI? Because the next step is we really need to see what AI looks like in the hands of a student. So while K through five, unfortunately, there are no AI tools that are allowable for that age level. So our AI exploration is continuing just with teacher use. But in K five and grade, and six through twelve, we have identified a handful of teachers at each level. So a handful of teachers at the elementary level, handful of teachers at the middle school level, and a handful of teachers at the high school level to what we call our AI Explorer Group. So we meet with them regularly throughout the year and we ask them how, how they're using AI. We have identified a particular tool at each of those levels that they are using in their work. And then I'll walk you through a little bit about what that, what that work looks like. So again, at the K through five level, there is nothing that's student-facing. So what they're exploring is still with teacher use. In grades six through twelve, not only are they exploring what it looks like in a teacher's workday, but also now what it looks like in a student's learning experience. So at the middle school level, since there is a number of data privacy laws and age restrictions, we really have to make sure that we pick tools that are, you know, that adhere to our ethical guidelines document. So if a student is in the class of one of our AI explorers at the middle school level, a letter was sent home by the teacher of that classroom letting parents know that they were exploring the use of an AI tool. The tool that these middle school explorers have used is called Brisk Education. And the reason why we chose Brisk is because students cannot access Brisk on their own. They can only access Brisk when it's explicitly allowed by the teacher. And anytime that a student uses Brisk in the classroom, the teacher has full transparency and insight into what the student is asking of the AI and what the AI is responding back with. So it's a very classroom-focused tool to give the power of AI that sits with the teacher and gives them a lot of oversight of how that looks in a student's hand. The high school is a little bit more open because they have obviously older students. And so the main tool that they're using, they are also using Brisk for some targeted use. But as a student population as a whole, they have access to Google's AI tool called Gemini. So right now, Wheaton North is the only campus that has students using Gemini. I would say in a couple weeks, Wheaton Warrenville South will be ready to introduce it to their students. The difference between the two campuses is that Wheaton Warrenville South just felt that they needed to spend more time educating their staff and students about responsible use around AI and what AI meant before they, before they turned on Gemini. Whereas North was just a little bit ahead in that education. But by the end of the year, we should have both campuses similar. So as I mentioned, Gemini has turned on for high school students only because it's for thirteen-plus, even though that would probably rope in eighth graders. It's only turned on for high school students and right now only at Wheaton North. And so one of the, one of the things that we always, always preach to a teacher anytime they have a question about AI is some of the bullet points that I mentioned here. First and foremost is data privacy. AI only gets smarter with the more information and data that we give it. However, being in an education environment, there's some data that cannot be given and, and let out of our, you know, our, our confines. So all of the tools, so that would be Brisk, Gemini, any tool that collects student data, we make sure that there's privacy requirements attached to that. And both of those tools adhere to that. Age requirements, we talked about, almost every AI tool has an age requirement associated with it. Most of them are thirteen-plus if they're educationally focused. One of the reasons we talked about why we picked Brisk especially for the middle school level is that transparency feature. It's really important for the teacher to know not only what students are asking of an AI, but what AI is responding back, right? Because if I'm a teacher, I want to make sure that the way that I teach and the way that I want students to learn a concept, I want to make sure the AI supports and explains things the same way that I as teacher would explain them. So that, that ability gives access to the teacher. And that also goes to the full control that a teacher has. So a teacher, you know, Brisk in particular, teachers have the full ability to turn that feature on and off and students cannot independently access that unless a teacher specifically turns it on for that particular assignment. It's also should be mentioned that AI is not being used for any type of summative grade. I know that there is kind of a concern out there about teachers using AI to, to help with, with the grading. But any AI tool that a teacher uses that involves feedback on an assignment is only used for formative feedback. What that means is we think it's really important that students have as much feedback, particularly on a writing assignment, as possible. So of course, our teachers are still giving their feedback on assignment. But now with AI, students now have the ability to get another piece of feedback. And that piece of feedback is in the moment. So it is pretty powerful for a student as they're working on an assignment to be able to have the AI tell them, am I on track, right? It doesn't even have to go necessarily to the teacher first to give that feedback, but a student as they're writing can get that feedback. So I think that's a really powerful tool for, for students to utilize. So what's next? So we're gonna try to continue that cohort model and look for potential expansion to see if we can get a few more teachers to grow this group. But really, the one central question that we're asking in this exploration, does AI actually do what companies tell us it can do? And not only that, but does it do it well? Because as with any ed tech space, there are tons of options, particularly now in the AI space. There are tons of vendors willing to sell you on the next big thing, right? Our AI does this, our AI does that. AI is changing so rapidly and evolving so quickly that I think it would be smart for District 200 to take the wait-and-see approach, not stop our work, but do it in very, do it in a very controlled, measured environment. And to that effect, that's the reason why at this time we are not adopting or signing on what, with a particular district-wide tool. Gemini, as I mentioned, at the high schools is probably the closest that we have to a, an actual adoption. But that is because it is part of our Google suite of tools now. And it comes as, it comes part of our, our license. So it's not an additional charge as well. So as we kind of transition out of, oh, one thing I wanted to mention too, this is really important. So in your folders too, you have this graphic, just wrapping up our, our AI discussion. As I worked with our high school staff, I came up with this scale that I call the AI Acceptable Use Scale. And it's a scale that's being adopted by staff as they introduce and work with students in the AI space. So what I want staff to see and what I want students to see is that AI doesn't mean an all-or-nothing proposition. There are plenty of things in the course of an assignment in which you can use AI for, right? So on this acceptable use scale, it goes all the way from no AI use to the left. And then what it does in the middle here is tries to pick out some of the specific tasks that a student might have in the middle of a, an assignment that maybe AI would be allowable for, all the way to full unfettered access throughout the entire assignment. But the hope here is that if we train students to have a gradual release method, we don't want students to kind of default and knee-jerk to, okay, I got an assignment, let me run to Gemini or let me run to ChatGPT and ask it what I should do, right? It is really important that students still practice the very important skills that teachers are trying to get students to, to have because they still need really, really good foundational skills and practice. skills and practice with those things, because when they finally get to AI, they have to have that knowledge to know whether or not the things that AI is giving back to them are accurate and maybe actually help them, they're usable. So there really is a lot of critical thinking that a student has to practice with before they can even have full access to AI. So as assignments get rolled out in the classroom, teachers know that students, you know, whether it's through Gemini here, or they go home and they sign up for personal accounts and they use other tools, are probably going to use AI at some point. So we've tried to introduce a scale to help them really put guidelines and boundaries about what acceptable use would be on any particular assignment. Okay, so now venturing into the boxes and wires side, all the things that we do in this department to make sure that teaching and learning can happen and that everyone can do their job efficiently. So some of the things that we look at is security. So Mr. Biskin and Dr. O'Keefe, we've done lots of work that the board is aware of around the topic of security, but particularly in our department, here are some of the things that we've done this year. So just as we do tabletop exercises for physical threats, you know, tornadoes, natural disasters, maybe death of a student, active shooter, whatever have you, we also did quite an extensive half-day tabletop led by a branch of Homeland Security called CISA about what would happen if District 200 was the victim of a fictitious cyber incident, right? How would we deal with that if we came in one day and all of the computers were locked up, the climate control system was going haywire, whatever have you? So we had some really fruitful conversations with quite a diverse group of people that filled the boardroom, and we had a really good discussion about what our incident response plan would look like in such a situation. We also have implemented a number of network monitoring tools, and that kind of goes with the first bullet point there, that unfortunately, schools are soft targets now with cyber attacks, so it's even more incumbent upon us that we remain vigilant in monitoring any type of behavior that's out of the norm on our network. So we've implemented a number of pieces of software that helps us determine what kind of behavior might be out of the norm. We also, as always, I mentioned every year, that we do continue our ongoing cybersecurity education and phishing campaigns with CUSD 200 staff. In fact, this week, we met with all of our district-level building leaders and talked about our most recent phishing campaign and have developed a workflow for if, at any point, a staff member is unsure of an email, whether it could be phishing, is this legit? Is somebody trying to get some information they shouldn't get? We now have a workflow that is literally one button that a staff member can press while they are in their email to report that email, even if they're not sure. And then we have systems now that will analyze that email to see if it is in fact phishing or not phishing. And as always, we also talked about this, we are fully implemented now with all of our camera and door access systems district-wide. So what's next in the safety and security space? So we are investigating software that will perform regular penetration testing. So if you're not familiar with the penetration test, you actually hire a hacker to see whether or not they can access your systems. And so usually, you find different vendors every year to do that. However, now with AI, there are pieces of software that will continually try to hack, right? It's not something now that you go and find a separate company for and do, which we still will do that, but this is more of a daily kind of report where it's always continually looking for gaps in the network. One thing that we are also going to keep close tabs on is with our new administration, obviously, with any new administration, it's at the behest of the administration to decide where monies go and what types of programs are funded. So we do lean very heavily on CISA, the organization that helped us with our tabletop, but they also are our first, one of our first lines of defense should we ever get attacked. They can help with that, and they also provide quite a bit of free tools and consultation in the cybersecurity space. So if that funding goes away, some of those free tools that we utilize, some of those opportunities to use them as consults might go away. One of the final things that we're also looking at is the financial viability of bringing what's called a SIEM SOC solution to our district. So what a SIEM SOC solution is, so there's two parts to this solution. One is, the first part is the SIEM, the S-I-E-M. We have lots of different tools on the network side that collect a lot of different logs, right? It tells you exactly what's happening in your network at any given time. Now, if something were to happen to our network, we need something to gather all those logs into a central repository so that a forensic specialist can make sense of what happened, where did things go wrong, where did the penetration occur, right? So a SIEM takes all of those logs and kind of gathers them together so that somebody else can make discernible decisions from it. The second part of this solution is called a SOC. So what this does, basically in real time, a human being will monitor our network 24/7. So when you have potential cyber incidents, they usually happen during off-hours because obviously that's usually when people aren't paying attention, right, to the network. They happen during vacation periods, or sometimes these bad actors are in countries that have different time zones, so you might get, you know, some sort of incident that's not where somebody's sitting at a desk doing something. So the SOC solution would provide 24/7 monitoring, and many districts do have both a SIEM and SOC solution. All major companies, I would gather, have these as well. So in the data systems space, we do continue to refine our online registration process, so every year, we get a little bit better in getting that as smooth as possible. So we did have a smooth rollout of new families registration opening. As I mentioned earlier, we also now have our returning families coming to register. One of the ways that we're also supporting the registration process is obviously in our multilingual space, so we do have dedicated times where our data systems manager is going to help families in particular get registered. And last year, with the help of Dr. O'Keefe and his department, we've also been able to have secretaries willing to put in some hours during the summer months to also invite families in and get registration complete. So that's been a big help for families who just need that extra support. So we're also continuing to look for ways to automate our crucial systems. Thank you to the board for acceptance. And one of those ways is our new help desk and asset management system that we'll be ready to take on. So the reason why we're looking for innovation in this space is that, in particular, for example, if a staff member has a question and they're not sure, is this a tech issue or is this a facilities issue? They have to go to two different systems in order to put in a ticket. We have our SolarWinds tech help desk, and then we have SchoolDude on the facility side. Hopefully, as we go through the years, there will be one interface for a staff member to use, so they don't have to make that decision. That decision can be made by the people that are running the ticketing system on the backend. Obviously, we are a district of 12,000, around 12,000 students. We have well more than 12,000 Chromebooks and pieces of computing equipment in our district. So it is really important that we track the cost to repair and what the true cost of ownership of those pieces of equipment are. And we also have the ability, as I mentioned, not only to bring in facilities one day, but you know, if it's needed, also HR as well. So I always say that technology, the technology department's kind of like the octopus of a district. We have a hand in every single department, right? Whether it's when a new employee gets on-boarded in HR, we have to set up all of their accounts and make sure that they're on-boarded properly so that they can have the tools to get work started, whether it's facilities, right? So if a teacher needs a new TV hung in their room, we have to order that TV and then work with facilities to hang that TV. Whether it's, you know, curriculum, right? We have to see if things are SOPA-approved and look at different digital tools. So we do have kind of a hand in all different departments, so any piece of software that we can have to kind of help that synergy across departments would be super helpful. So with that, I can take any questions about anything that was mentioned.
I've got a handful. I'll start on the AI side. The Ethical Use and Guidance Around the Use of AI Document, where does or will this live and how will it be communicated to staff and students alike?
So everybody should have a copy of it. I would say, once, we are in the process, actually, probably in the next few months, having a staff Intranet created, so my guess is it's going to live there. This is also meant to be a living, breathing document, so that's why I specifically put the date on top of it, because it is a topic that's evolving, that my guess is along the way, we might have to add some things to these guidelines.
And for the student portion, is it intended that this will eventually find its way into the handbook or somewhere else?
We haven't had any particular discussion about whether it would find its way into the handbook. That's probably a discussion we could have at some point. I will say that it is an expectation that if AI is allowed in a classroom, that the teacher is the one who's going over these expectations with students.
Okay, thank you. And on the elementary one-to-one device front, has any academic research been reviewed to really understand the implications, positive and negative, of one-to-one device use on students, especially starting at those early ages?
In what regards? In engagement, academic outcomes, what particular area?
Academic outcomes, mental health, attention, kind of a full spectrum.
Sure. So what I can say is that I doubt you'll ever find a comprehensive study about one-to-one with academic outcomes. Just because Chromebooks are a tool, right? And it's very hard to standardize for how a teacher would use that Chromebook with a student. So again, it's really leaning heavily on how teachers are going to use that tool rather than the tool itself. As far as engagement, I have come across a number of studies that kind of, you know, have some inconclusive evidence of whether engagement remains high or gets distracted. Again, I think that is a hard study to kind of wrap your head around, just because also everyone has a different operational definition of what engagement is. But I think it's really important that, as far as in the mental health space, that we really focus in on those differences between active and passive screen time. I think if you have a study that really embraces active screen time, you'll see that mental health is helped and stays healthy. It's that passive scrolling, particularly passive scrolling when there's no supervision around, that you might have some other instances that you have to kind of watch out for.
Can I jump in here for a second? So there's a plethora of research that shows that the use of screens versus reading on pencil paper affects the connectivity of brain.
Yes, I'm familiar.
Connections. There's also, right here, screen exposure was related to EEG patterns previously related to altered attention abilities. So I think we can't really throw out.
Yeah, I'm not saying to throw out.
It's really good research.
Yeah.
And I think we should have looked at it a little bit more closely.
I'm not saying to throw out. What I am saying is with any screen study, look to see if it differentiates between active and passive. I think the problem is a lot of these studies lump it all together and just say, screen time.
But some of it is done, is looking at learning, like learning through a computer program versus learning with a teacher, paper, pencil, thing, and it's definitely showing that more connections are made when you are off of the screen versus on. In fact, actually, it decreases the amount of connectivity when you're using a screen to interact. I just think there's so much out there, and I thank you for your presentation. A lot of work went into that, and I appreciate that. And I just want to let Eric continue, but want to say that I think maybe we approached it a little bit differently than I would have, looking at why we need to keep these versus why we need them, if that makes sense? We sort of have them, and so of course, teachers are using them in some way, shape, or form, but are they vital? Do we need them?
Yeah, I would argue that some of the reasons why we need to keep them is some of the top things.
And so when you, like, one of the reasons on there is the block scheduling. In my understanding, the block scheduling for elementary is related to reading and math, and both of those curriculums are independent of the use of screens.
They are, except for the fact that when we teach kids to write, we teach them to write by hand, we teach them to write on a piece of technology. And I think both skills are vital. We may not agree on that completely, but I think kids need to learn in both modalities. If, I hear your point on the research, if we were overly reliant only on technology as the platform for that, that's not the way that the learning experience sits in our classrooms.
I just pause and hesitate when we're putting something in the hands of students. As a learning tool, that isn't the best for our students to be spending their time on. In terms of like typing, I'm going to type to learn classes, I have no problem with that, or like computer literacy, like how do you access the IAR testing, like knowing how to navigate on a computer for that purpose, or knowing how to type, is different than learning on a computer.
Right, but I think there is a cost to not exposing kids to essential skills that they're going to need to be successful.
But in first and second grade, third grade.
Yeah, I think there's a cost to not exposing them. I know, I hear you, but.
I mean, I think I would have liked to have seen more research evidence-based put into this decision, I guess.
I appreciate that, and all I will say to the board always is we welcome your feedback on things you need to see. It's a little tough for us to respond to that now when we're at decision point and you're articulating that, but I hear you.
You also mentioned the heavy surveying of staff. Was the staff surveying limited to the elementary school staff, or did we talk to anyone in the older grades to understand what they are seeing in terms of student capabilities, competencies, behaviors, as the students have had more exposure to one-to-one device use?
Short answer is, we only surveyed and included our active listening sessions with elementary school teachers, but we did hear from our fifth-grade teachers through their interviews, just talking to, when they meet with middle school teachers, they want to make sure that they're sending students with the skills that are needed, because there is more activities that are in digital formats potentially at the middle school level, and they are cognizant that they want to be able to send students to middle school with those skills already developed. And I will say that just marching through the different year levels, we heard from fifth-grade, fourth-grade teachers that they can tell students are ready and capable of taking on new tasks on the computer, because they have been given those incremental tasks throughout their time, and it doesn't come to fifth grade, and a student doesn't know how to go to Google Classroom, doesn't know how to Classroom, doesn't know how to go to Google Docs and start typing. They see students with those skills by the time they get to them.
That's helpful. The, the counterpoint I might add more, I think there might have been value in, in surveying more teachers at the upper grade levels, is some anecdotal feedback I've received from teachers that especially when it comes to activities like timed writing, that they're seeing increasing challenges with that, that they've attributed to, you know, not just, you know, students more frequently typing than writing by hand, but also the use of dictation tools. And so, you know, how we manage that so that, you know, timed writes, that can be very important on, you know, upper grade level and, and college activities don't suffer as a result of this.
Sure, we can definitely keep that in mind as we go forward.
You mentioned that one of the reasons for one-to-one device is to support standardized testing activities. At what grade level is standardized testing first delivered using the Chromebooks?
I think Ms. Murphy can, can answer that.
So our students take FastBridge on the computer starting in the spring of first grade. And then the IAR assessment is, starts in third grade. That is also taken on the computer. Oh, I should also add access for our multilingual learners. That is also delivered by the computer, so that's even at the primary grades.
Just two more items. Straying a little bit from the elementary school topic, you know, colleges and universities still predominantly do not recommend Chromebooks for their students. Most universities are still recommending Windows-based devices, some especially in the arts, you know, tend towards Apple devices. Have we given any thought to straying from Chromebooks as the sole platform at the upper grade levels to give students exposures, exposure to other platforms that may benefit them more as they transition to universities?
Honestly, I, I, I guess I can comment on, you know, I guess colloquially, when I, when I hear students that, you know, back when I was in the classroom and I've had seniors graduate, a number of students are still using the Google Suite, right? So it tends to just be whatever the professor may be familiar with. I would say one of the biggest selling points for why schools tend to go with Chromebooks is from a cost savings analysis. And I will say that from a central management standpoint, it is extremely easier to manage a Chromebook than a Windows-based device, and even less so if it was an Apple device.
And then my last item is, is more of a comment than a question. The limited community feedback we've received on this topic has been against the one device, one devices coming home. It's been less about the classroom aspect, more about the home aspect. There aren't many topics where we get community feedback that is so uniform in nature. And so I think the steps like educating the community on light speed, on the YouTube blocking at the younger grades is great. I think especially with something like the light speed, it's one thing to tell families how they can limit access after hours, but if educators don't follow suit by providing homework assignments that will be compatible with that, I don't think it adds value. And so my hope would be that as we enable these tools for, for families, that we're also making sure that either the primary assignments that go home with the students are paper-based, or that there's alternative assignments that are paper-based for those families that are electing not to have the Chromebooks in use at home.
Absolutely. We, and that's something we can continue to monitor as assignments are going home, if they find themselves in digital formats and that comes to, or that's at odds with kind of what the policies of a, of a parent are, we'll, we'll definitely address that as, if we see a need with that.
Okay, thank you very much. I mean, I think I share some of the same concerns as Angela, but the concerns for me are more about the outside of school hours than what's happening within the, the walls of the classroom. Because as you mentioned, within the walls of the classroom, it's going to be much more of that active activity. Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
I have a few questions. I appreciate how you made the distinction between the equipment itself and then the use of that and how that can be sort of more productive use versus unproductive use. And so I'm wondering if you can comment on some of the ways that we're educating teachers on developing tools for that more productive use?
Yeah, so we do have a number of innovation and technology coordinators. So Caitlin Cohn is particularly at our elementary level, so that is her responsibility to go into schools and do just that, help teachers come up with productive use of those Chromebooks so that when you're using Chromebooks with students, it really capitalizes on that active screen time and really directly supports the curriculum that's in front of students. And then we also have Lee Cook at our middle school levels doing the same thing. And then we have dedicated individuals at both high schools that are also doing the same thing.
And in your presentation, the 55 minutes a day of the average time spent, is that just within school hours or is that all 24 hours?
The whole day.
Okay.
The whole day.
I'm also wondering if we have these tools for parents that want to shut off access afterwards. If you can tell me how many parents have opted to shut that off and if that's given us any indication of, is that message of you have that option to do that being received? And if it looks like it's not, what else can we do to convey that message?
So I can't tell you how many parents have utilized that feature without maybe surveying the, the parents that are actively signed up for the parent portal, which we could definitely do, because that, that feature is a toggle on/off. So it might be today, I don't want, you know, as a punishment, you're not allowed to go on internet, so I turn it off, right? But all the other days, it stays on. So I can also, I can get to you how many parents have opted into just the parent portal access as well, if you'd like that.
Do you just have any gut sense of, is it minimal electing this option? I guess what I'm wondering is, is this message getting through and what can we do to?
I, I feel like it's definitely getting through. I would probably say I have about five to seven, five to seven requests a week for, to sign up for this parent portal access. So it is getting out there. And so I think there are definitely avenues where we continue to get that message out there. We're probably a couple hundred families right now. And so while that might, may or may not sound like a big number, keep in mind that like one family might have four or five kids, right? So that, you know, that helps there. But I, I would say it's, it's, it's steady and it continues to be steady.
Thank you.
Sort of a follow-on question to Julie's. When you mentioned that toggling on or off, so a family that doesn't want their children using that Chromebook after hours, do they need to each day toggle it off or can that be set up as a schedule or a standard?
If they leave it off, it stays off. They have to go actively turn it back on if they want to turn it back on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I have one super tactical question in the interest of time, just real short. When you did tabletop exercise, do we engage our cyber insurance company upfront right away? We should.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yep, we do.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a, one quick comment, just kind of reflecting. I think one-to-one was one of the very first things we ever talked about when I first joined the board, so I don't want to thank the pandemic for anything, but one thing that I thought was pretty good is it would kind of force us into this situation. So I appreciate all the research and analysis you put into it. I attended the CAC meeting when this was first brought up and some of this stuff was pretty eye-opening to me. Appreciate all the tools and information you put in place for parents. I know we've received some feedback. I wouldn't characterize that as a lot of feedback from elementary parents. Maybe that's just my, my filter, but I think one of the things that I kind of taken away from this, just a reminder, we have a diverse community. What some people might view as a distraction, others view as a need. And so I, I really don't feel good about the idea of wiping this slate, slate clean from an elementary level. I'd rather continue to improve. This is a reality of the world we live in, rather continue to get better, make our students more aware of what they do to do, give parents more power, what happens outside their homes. So I totally support kind of the, the continuation of the one-to-one, especially at the elementary level.
I have two more things. So with bookworms and, what's our math one?
I am.
It'll show you the math. I am, yes. Outside of writing, like what are we using the Chromebooks for, for those two particular curricula?
I mean, I can also say that at least for I Am, there is the opportunity for supplemental practice in, in, in digital formats.
Is it through I Am itself or is it something that we're bringing from another platform?
I would say Johnson in particular is one of those pilot groups that has a digital platform that specifically works through I Am lessons in a digital way.
Yeah, so I can expand on that. So Mr. Spencer is exactly right. Through title funds, Johnson Elementary School is utilizing a digital platform for I Am in particular. In terms of bookworms, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, our students are writing bookworms assignments on the Chromebook, but they also are doing online research on the topics that are a part of those writing assignments as well.
So that's in the fourth, fifth middle school grades?
Yeah, with the bookworms, it's in particular at the intermediate grades.
One thing that I think is coming with the use of AI at the high school level, I know it's come to the college level, is that when students take exams, they now do have to write hand, you know, handwrite something out because of the possibility of using AI. So professors want to see that they actually know the information, they're not just regurgitating something from AI. So we do still have to have those handwriting abilities, I think. I, I struggle with, I guess I just disagree that this is making our younger students better when we know that their brain connectivity would be better without it. Yet we're like, well, let's just use it. I, I struggle with that. There's another point I was going to make about the curriculum and it escaped me, so maybe that's good.
I, I would just like to remind the board that our students do get regular handwriting practice as well to write out their assignments. So it's a balance. Like Dr. Schuler said, it was, they are utilizing.
I do think that, you know, typing skills are, you know, you can purposely teach typing, type to learn, rather than using it as a learning tool per se. I remembered my point. I worry that a decade from now, 15, 20 years from now, we may be looking back at this giving technology to the younger students the way we now look at what happened with phonics and the science of reading. Like, had we thought hard enough and looked at the whole picture neurologically well enough, would we still do the same thing? Like, I'm just concerned that, you know, maybe 20 years ago, if someone had asked those questions about Lucy Culkins and Fontes and Pennell, like if that would have changed what happened with that. That's all.
Yeah, I appreciate that as a board, we have a variety of opinion, right? That's what's good. It makes us healthy, you know, makes us strong, which is great. We moved the oral report upfront because we're going to be voting on action item four, which is more about the Chromebook refresh, right? So you had action item four, which was more of a, should we have, I think that topic really is around, should we have one-to-one or not? We're talking about that. We just finished a broader conversation around technology and education at what level and is it right or not? So I want to, I do want to separate that a little. I know they're not completely independent, but they are a little more separate. So if we have any more top questions around, for Mr. Spencer around the oral report, we should do those now and then move into the more action item focused refresh. How does the board feel about that? Okay, thank you. Oh, John.
I would just comment, this has been very instructive to me in terms of learning more about the use at the different age levels, the difference between active and passive. And particularly, I'm frankly surprised that 55 minutes is all they're using it for. And with the needs for testing and learning, becoming familiar with it and comfortable with it for, for their testing purposes, I think, I think we're in good shape with it, I really do.
The other point I make, because I don't think the conversation about technology education has to stop with this one action item, right? It's an ongoing dialogue and conversation and probably involves multiple members of the SLT, frankly. And so I think it's a good topic to keep, to keep exercising for sure. So, you know, I don't want to, I want to make sure we respect that and understand that and continue that conversation. All right, thank you. So we're moving on to action item four, which is approval of student devices related to Chromebook refresh and new career pathway, pathways courses, pathway courses. Dr. Schuler?
I don't think any additional information other than to, to mention that the Chromebook refresh is, is both a portion of the elementary piece, there's a middle school piece, and then there's some very specific things to, to one of our career pathways pieces, so.
Thank you. Board, any additional questions?
When you say a portion of the elementary piece, can you clarify?
Just because it's not, it's not all elementary schools that are on the same cycle. I think it's a portion of our elementary schools.
It's combined.
Yeah. The upper, we divide by upper alpha and lower alpha.
All right, board.
And clarify, four, five and six are related. Four and five are purchases or approval to purchase. Six is actually the lease to fund.
The lease for all of them, correct. Okay, so board, I do have a motion in a second to approve the purchase of student devices related to the Chromebook refresh and new career pathway course, courses as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Colvis, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes, Ms. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
No.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes. Round to action item five, approval to purchase Hubble Middle School equipment from Life Fitness. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, I don't think significant additional information. Board members saw the agenda item, we're, we're refreshing fitness equipment in your, your room here at Hubble.
Board, any questions or comments?
Can you clarify why Hubble has a different type of equipment and whether it's our intent to eventually get the other schools like Monroe up to the same standard and variety?
Yeah, so Hubble just has a fitness room that was built when this building was built that was a little different than a couple of the other schools. I think Dr. O'Keefe has shared in most of the middle school designs, there's some form of fitness space that's involved, and I think it will have pretty similar equipment, even as the refresh of equipment here is, is more focused on cardio equipment, less focused on like weight equipment here at the middle school. So I think it will get more similar as we complete these middle school projects.
Any other questions? All right, board, I do have a motion in a second to approve the purchase Hubble Middle School equipment from Life Fitness as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Ms. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes. Round to action item number six, approval of master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with First American for the purpose of purchasing Hubble Middle School fitness equipment and student devices related to the Chromebook refresh. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, Mr. Paulson actually set, set this up. This is just the lease that's actually covering those items. I think there's a question asked, we don't typically bundle multiple items like this, but because we were entering into a lease, there was an opportunity to do this. And Dr. O'Keefe just recognized a cost savings opportunity by entering into one lease rather than structuring them separately.
Board, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question is, so same duration, right? So the lease payment covers, the Chromebooks are going to last a lot less time than the fitness equipment.
Four-year lease for all the equipment, regardless of what equipment we're talking about.
All right, board, I do have a motion in a second to approve the master tax-exempt lease purchase agreement with First American as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Colvis. Ms. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Colvis?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
No.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Yes, boundary changes. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, we presented this item at the last meeting. Since that time, we have a couple of community forums, one in person at Washington, one online. online. We also have had an open Google form, have received just shy of 50 comments on the open Google form. All comments in favor of the change we've received. No feedback from the community that would suggest anything other than what we've recommended. So we do recommend you take action and adjust that boundary change tonight so that we can continue to move forward with communicating with families in front of the step-up night.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the boundary adjustment for Franklin Middle School as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchinson, please call the roll.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes. On to action item number eight, adoption of resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time, first, second, and third-year, non-tenured certified staff. Dr. Schuler?
This is an annual agenda item for the board, based on tenure laws and required date to release staff. These are staff for which we either are not certain that a position is going to be available next year, or folks that may be on a one-year position covering a leave or other circumstance. So these are honorable dismissals, and it does not mean that all of these individuals will not be back with us, but until that staffing plan is absolutely set, if you don't take this item, you absorb those positions in your budget.
Board, any additional questions? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time, first, second, and third-year, non-tenured certified staff and authorize notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code, section 24-11, as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rutledge?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Ms. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes. On to action item number nine, adoption of resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time, non-tenured certified staff. Dr. Schuler?
Same introduction, this is, these are just individuals that are on part-time status. Again, most will be returning in some capacity, just want to make sure we take this action until those needs are fully determined.
Thank you. Board, any questions? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time, non-tenured certified staff and authorize notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code, section 24-11, as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Ms. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Yes. We have three remaining oral reports, and the first is on the middle school capital projects. Dr. Schuler?
Yep, so Mr. Doulter's coming up to the podium, he's going to provide the update for you. Just a quick recap as he's doing that, Mr. Paulson had asked earlier about a budget update. So as we hit a point in project issuance two, both two A, two B, where we get to a 90% control estimate, that budget estimate will be completed again by Nicholas, and that'd be a very appropriate time to make sure that we bring that to you as a separate piece, so you have that overall control estimate tonight. Is really going to focus on a design update around a few key elements in issuance, really two A, two B, that will be a part of the work that's going to be approved this summer. So, Mr. Doulter?
Thank you for the introductions. My name is Mike Doulter, I'm a senior project architect with Perkins and Will. As Dr. Schuler indicated, I'm going to be talking about a design update for issuance two. These are the projects that will be coming before you in the next few months for approval. So we're going to talk, we're going to just give an update of what the project schedule looks like, make sure you're, we're following the project schedule as it is right now, just to give you an update on that. Then we'll go through design for each one of the schools that will be as part of that issuance two. So, looking at the project schedule overall, as we've discussed previously, apologize, we have broken the project into three different issuances. You've seen issuance one come before you previously for the Monroe classrooms, there's been some additional information that has come for outfitting of those classrooms, so that work is scheduled to be built this summer. We're working on issuance two, which is the building additions, as well as some additional enabling projects at all three schools. That work will start at Edison, I'm sorry, at Franklin and Monroe this upcoming summer. What we will see for Edison here is a project that will start spring break of the following year. So that will continue throughout the full school year to be completed in the summer of 2026. And then we're continuing in parallel path with all of this to work on the design for the issuance three, which is the bulk of work that's focused on renovations at all three schools that will happen during the summers of 2026 and 2027. So the schedule, the overall Gantt chart that you see here for the issuances and the project phasing with that really stays as it has been. We are in the process of design for contract documents for issuance two A and two B. Two A and two B, issuance two has been broken into A and B to expedite the need for getting into the ground, as well as the building infrastructure in part of two A, and then the rest of the architectural fit out is, will follow a month later in two B. So the rest of the whole project schedule remains the same. You see here, that's been noted, the Edison addition, spring break start for that. Again, that's to maximize the use of the PE spaces during the winter months, and since it's a smaller scope, it can be accomplished during the timeframe that allows PE classrooms to happen outside when that facility is taken offline. Questions on the schedule? Okay. So we're going to run through design, school by school. Where we see here, there's a lot of similarities to the concepts that you've previously seen here. We've been doing a lot of refining with that, as well as working with each one of the schools and developing the overall program, confirming and going through a lot of the design elements here. So we start off with Edison. The dashed line represents really the separation between the existing building and the new here. So we're putting a building addition on the south side of this, gymnasium, reorienting the gym to the north and south for the main competition gym, providing a right-sized facility for that, as well as adding an additional learning, teaching space for PE at Edison. We have some, we're also expanding the toilet rooms that service both the cafeteria and the gymnasium. This is an opportunity to really provide a way to segment off this part of the building from the rest of the northern portion of the building when this is in use by public. So you can see the corridor to the north of the gym really has a good way to be separated from the rest of the building, has those two toilet rooms that are brought here, which currently only serves, has one in this area. We have an expanded storage room that services the gymnasium as well. Some of the images, we're continuing to work on studies for both exterior windows and glazing on the south side, because we know it's a concern about direct light that's coming into that space. What we're showing right now is some louvers over there. We want to maintain the ability to see out from the space, to get that natural light into the space, but not have direct glare that comes in there. So a lot of this is taking from the same architectural components that are on the rest of the building as well. So we're using the same color and texture of brick that's extending out into the new building. We're providing a co-use space on the outside. You can see the basketball court here that replaces the courts that are out there right now. We've been working with the Park District closely on this as well, to make sure we're not impeding upon the fields that are around it, and providing a useful court on the outside of the building as well. When we look at the inside of the building, we're looking actually northern, to the north in the gym right now, there are currently some glass block windows that are up the top and that form a clear story in this space, that we're trying, that we're taking out the glass block and putting some vision light in there. It's northern facing, so we're able to get some passive light that's in there and avoid any of the direct glare, but we're able to also add those views back into that space from, to see outside, get that natural light that comes in there. We've also looked at adding an array of those solar tubes. Those are, those are what we talked about with the classroom, that we think is a good fit for this space, to bring natural light within the entire space. There's a code required amount of natural light for the space, but we're also going above and beyond that to see how close we can get to fully illuminating the space during a sun, sunny day without having to use artificial light. So we think that there are some significant benefits from that. You see that we have bleachers off on the left side here, there's multiple different court configurations, as well as a screen that comes down in the middle to separate off these into two separate teaching areas you can use for practice, for basketball, volleyball, pickleball, badminton, all those, all those sports that are able to be accommodated within this space. Going to move on to Monroe. So the Monroe addition, very similar to what we've talked about from, for quite a while now, on the configuration of the new addition here. There's, we've been, we've been working very closely with staff and faculty to talk about, you know, how these spaces want to be fit out, what are the best approaches to those? So you can see in the north portion of the addition, we have a band orchestra and choir classrooms. Those are acoustically separated from each other by some intermediate practice and storage spaces. We've been working closely with our acoustic engineer to make sure that there's a, to limit the sound bleed throughout the spaces, as well as really talk about how the auditorium works, both with our acoustic engineer and our theater consultants. When we talk about the functionality of that, we've been going back with a number of meetings with our, with the staff from the building to make sure that this all matches the expectations of that, and really is built upon the long-term goals of the facility there. So the auditorium plan, you see, we're very deep into the design for this. We've been working on the overall seating count of that, as well as the configuration of control rooms, accessibility throughout the spaces, as well as access to the stage, how the stage lighting, rigging, and shell and storage components work throughout there, controlling the acoustics and light throughout the space, and have been really diving deep into how that works. And that's really resulted in some architecture that you see here that matches, that takes a lot of the cues from the existing building. If you remember, on the south entry to Monroe, there's a, the current auditorium has a cast-in-place concrete rounded edged piece here, and we've taken a lot of the same inspiration from that in how we look here. We're looking at a lot of, about how to mark off the entry on this side of the building. We don't think it's going to be a heavy entry point, because we still value the current approach to how people move throughout the building, using the center commons as kind of the central distribution hub for the campus. But there is a drop-off lane that's been provided back here for those who may need to be dropped off closer to the facility, and we want to make the entryway really visible and really well identified from this side. So this is that entryway, and we're taking a canopy cue, and if you remember back to a conversation we had, looking at the south entrance, we're trying to make, to bring in the same ideas from the south entrance here to the, to this west entrance for the performing arts. This is right along the pathway that leads to the bridge over the railroad that connects Mannheim all the way across there as well, Manchester across there as well. So we've been working closely with landscaping, as well as civil, to understand the stormwater management requirements here, and the planting requirements that come along with that, to try to soften the edges of these buildings. And then the architecture, looking north here, we really want to bring natural light into the performing arts classroom spaces as much as possible, so we have some north-facing windows here. We're using a lot of the same architectural language from the existing building with the battered walls here as well, in a different interpretation of that approach that's made on the main campus.
Hey, Michael, before you leave the X here, can I ask a question? Go back to the view with the screen wall?
Yeah.
Back one. So can you, that's not on the plan.
Right.
Can you talk about a little bit about that in more detail?
Yeah, sure. The, this screen wall is intended to, will be a part of a future phase. So this is issuance three work that we're designing right now, so we understand how it impacts the overall, you know, the precast structure for the auditorium here. The idea is that we're developing a screen because we're moving a lot of mechanical equipment to the roof above the current mechanical room in this area. We also have what we're affectionately referring to as utility alley in the back here, because in plan, generally speaking, we're affecting almost every utility in the building with the location of this new addition. So the area to the south of the auditorium is really where all of that's going to get redirected in this space. So we're, we're not showing it in this drawing here, but the idea is to provide a way to close that off, but still allow deliveries to be made in this area, still allow trash control to be happening here. And then also, you know, take that same screen that is going to be screening the rooftop mechanical equipment, and use that for that purpose as well. I apologize, I'm getting a little tricky with my clicking. But we have an exit that comes out of the auditorium, as well as the auditorium pre-function space into this zone, but then that has a man door that allows exit from there, and has some overhead doors that allow vehicular access into that zone.
So that door inside of that screen wall that accesses the stage?
That's, that's actually going directly into the alleyway in there, and there, but there's a door that exits through the precast into that alley from the stage area as an emergency exit.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to point out, just an emergency exit.
Yes, that's right. And we want to keep as many people out of that alley as possible, that's why we're looking at how we can wall that off.
It's also a safety issue, we don't want kids hanging out there.
That's right, absolutely. So going to the interior a little bit, well, looking at a common view of those performing arts classrooms here, again, we've been working closely with staff and faculty on how these are designed, as well as the acoustic design has started to change and morph a little bit, how we were working on the ceilings. We've been working on technology integration within these spaces as well, and you can see that there's storage that's provided throughout here. So really, a strong view of that. The hallway outside of this space really serves multiple functions, both for performer use during performances. So this area is blocked off from some, some public use when performances are in progress, and the, these spaces can be used as green rooms for that, and as performers are moving across there, we do have some single-user toilets in these areas that can serve for that function as well. But we're, we're taking some of the design cues from the existing building, and really taking a modern interpretation of that with the, with some of the wood slat walls that you're seeing, with some hint of artwork beyond there, but just really trying to tie that into some of the same pieces that are from the existing building as well. And then the pre-function space to the auditorium, again, we're trying to bring natural light into what is currently designed as kind of a buried space, so we see some skylights that bring that in there, some of the same wood slat wall and opportunities for large-scale art or recognition of student work or student, or awards within this space, but also some gathering spaces that you can see, you know, as you have a major function that would happen in the auditorium can happen outside of this space. This also serves as a secondary exit point for the gymnasiums in here. So this is a direct corridor that leads all the way from the entry to the south at the parking, all the way to the north on the north field as well. That was one of the goals of this, was to try to straighten out as much as we can the circulation within the central spine of Monroe, and this, this works on that as well. So into the auditorium, we've had a number of discussions about how the house of this space works, and really have, and reacting to some of the inspirational images, as well as concepts that have been developed for this, to develop a, an approach that is, you know, softened on the edges, has a, has a dark persineum that has some additional texture to it, that has, brings some life, but disappears when the lights go out. We have the lowered seating bowl, as well as accessible access on either side of the stage that you see here, and the rear parterre that's tiered on the backside here, and in-house audio position that's centered in the space. We have a lower, a raised and lower lighting grid that's similar to the one that is over in the Hubble auditorium here. We have a lower, a raisin lower lighting grid that's similar to the one that is over in the Hubble Auditorium here as well, and some lighting positions on the side also.
And how many, how many seats will be in that auditorium?
We have 511 total seats, so 504 standard seats and, and seven leave-out for accessible seats that are distributed throughout the house.
Those seating numbers, both for the auditorium space here and for the gymnasium when we were looking at, it was Edison.
Edison, yes.
Have we validated those counts against historical attendance of events, just to make sure that they're right-sized?
It's a good question, the, the target has been to be a comparable house at Monroe for this, for the seating as we have at Hubble, so it's, it's pretty much on par with that, and the, the discussion from, you know, Monroe doesn't have an auditorium of that size, so, but they, they have looked at, you know, past performances, the number of times they've had to go to different locations, or the number of times they've had to have multiple shows. So they, they believe that there is both a community use for that, as well as an internal function use for that. That was the, the push was to be on par in that direction. As far as the, the seating in, at Edison, the goal there was to try to bring as many students into that space as possible, especially when you're looking at multiple grade-level activities within there, so that, that's the primary goal for that. There's going to be, there's always discussion around, you know, how, the, the minimum amount of space that they have for seating right now for, for competition events or basketball, volleyball, right, that they're already, always pretty well-packed and standing room has been what we've heard in there too, so there's a, there's a good use for that also.
And then, when we were talking about the furnishings, there was a very robust process in terms of, you know, setting up those kind of demo rooms and trialing furnishings and technology, and I thought that was great. When we look at things like the auditorium here, or the new music rooms, what is the process for furnishings and especially technology in these spaces?
That's a good question, the, the auditorium, we're, we're using recommendations from, from both our, our theater consultants, our acoustic consultants, as well as working directly with the end-users for the space to understand, you know, what is the, the best approach to that. We have built-in some alternates into the project also for some things above and beyond what you even have here for, just to, to make sure we're future-proofing this, we're not going so far as to, we know, we understand that this is a middle school auditorium, and we're working as much within that context as we can, knowing that there are best practices behind that. As far as the classrooms concerned, I think there's some fairly good standard approaches to the furnishings within those spaces. The, we use, we look at industry, you know, kind of leading furniture for that as the baseline, because they have the, the seated posture components built into that already. And we start at that point and see if there's any modifications that need to be made, made from that.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll run onto Franklin here, so the Franklin addition again is in the northeast corner of campus. This is a, a similar in performing arts, we do have choir, orchestra and band. We do have a additional classroom here that we're tagging as drama, we know that there's some, some, some preference on location of drama adjacent to the auditorium, so we think this is a good location because it's close to the auditorium as it sits, but there may be some movement of that piece and, and then we just have this as a classroom space within this area. But this is the whole idea was to try to consolidate performing arts within this location. Again, we're going through the same acoustic studies, looking at the exterior enclosure and the interior separation of spaces, especially when we look at the separation between that choir space and the adjacent existing building here, to make sure that we're not having sound bleed with, into the existing spaces or into the adjacent spaces. So we're controlling that as much as possible here, very similar program overall and very similar conversations that we've been having with the performing arts faculty and staff at Franklin as well. So looking at, out the, on the outside, we're starting, we see more and more development of the landscape within this area. We do have some stormwater management that we're using onsite here through plantings and through some minor depressions that surround this area. We're making as many spaces as we can to provide a buffer between the building and that landscape, as well as the landscape in the, in the sidewalk area. Same thing here where we're trying to bring natural light into those classrooms as much as possible at multiple levels, but also provide the ability to control that, so we do have, and in all these areas where we're showing the windows, we do have roller shades that are able to bring that, to, to control that, that natural light within that space. As we've talked about the south entrance, we're continuing to develop that, as well as we're continuing to develop the north entrance. And this is something that you'll see start to work, work start to happen in phases this upcoming summer. Because as part of the first phase of demolition, we're removing the current accessible entry to campus, which is off on the east side of building. We're going to add accessible entry on the north side, as well as the, the area that we've talked about on the south side that we're, we're not presenting today that, because we're continuing to work on that. But you'll see that, that new ramp entry on the, the north side that will eventually look something like this, this is not where we're, where we'll come to at the end of the summer, but we'll continue to work at this as part of phase three, just wanted to make sure that you understood that it was part of this that would be developed as part of issuance two here. So the idea from issu, for issuance three is to add a canopy to this side, add some additional areas for brand experience, as well as some seating areas under that canopy, potentially as we continue to develop this, this space.
So the intention there is to have a covered ramp as opposed to having the ramp come up and exposed to the weather?
Well, the ramp, the ramp would be covered on the very top, yes, the, the stairs as they come down from the, the top landing and the ramp as it moves down are currently shown as being exposed, but the landing as you get to the top would be the same for both the stairs and the ramp, if that makes sense. Okay. And we're looking at that same approach to the, to the south entrance as well, trying to figure out how to maximize the cover for the, the ramp and the stair as well as we, as we develop that too.
I would just, having had some experience of dealing with a ramp in nasty weather is more of a challenge than some people realize.
Sure, yeah, appreciate that. And we'll, we'll, we have time to continue to develop the, the overhang and cover approach to those accessible entries at all three schools. This is the corridor outside this area, we're showing again some placeholders of opportunities for art within the space. We have, we've introduced some color into here, we've also added some frit on the glass that, that, you know, mimics some of the, the standards for music as a playful sort of reminder of where you are within the space, but we want to take what could be a, a rather blank corridor and add some life as some ability to show student work, as well as student awards in this space.
So, Michael?
Please.
Go back, go back to that last one, real quick question, so that, the left side of that corridor, that's going into the courtyard?
Yeah, that would be the future courtyard, so the, the courtyard that's able to bring light within the space, as well as within the library that comes in issuance three is in that, in that space.
So the other side of that is the library?
That's right.
Okay. Hard, hard paved surface within that courtyard?
We're still, we're still in design on that, I think there's, we've, we've done the solar studies to determine where we can actually put plants in here, and they, they may have an ability to survive. We think that there may be more of an opportunity to have hardscape that works a little bit better because of that, because we're, we have some shading challenges within here at certain times of the day. But we're, we're still working on what the program is and how the space actually relates to that overall. The classroom you'll see is fairly similar to the, and by intention, to the classroom that you saw over at Monroe. Same basic premises have been used on the design of that, but it has its own unique character that responds to the sighting as well. And I'm clicking. There we go.
I recognize these are, you know, basic renderings, but what I haven't seen in any of the music rooms is sound systems for either recording or playing, are they intended to be outfitted?
Yes, yeah, the, the individual rooms have the, the capability of recording in the individual rooms. And then there's also playback component to that, so we're not showing the speakers in here, but that is the intent, yes. And that may be it, because I'm not able to go forward, so. Any questions, comments?
I assume that everything's on track in terms of approvals from the city relative to building permits and others?
Yes, we have, as you had a item on your consent agenda today for, for building permits from the ROE for issuance one. As we move through the design, the, through the contract documents and bidding process here for issuance two, we'll have the same, our ROE permitting strategy. We've worked with the city of Wheaton on, on going through the public review process for some of the variances that we're, we're seeking, minor variances on, on to the schools from a zoning standpoint. There's a, a public hearing coming up shortly this month for that. And then we've also had our initial review responses from stormwater from the city have come back with the, again, minor tweaks, nothing major, because we had a robust intake process with them where we, we walked through that as well. We have a number of different stakeholder meetings that will be coming up for issuance three, as well as, we're lining up additional agencies to talk to about the whole project, so that everybody is fully aware of what's going on.
Do you have a date for the presentation to the, is it the city council or the zoning board?
It's the zoning board, I believe it's April 22nd. Thank you, yes.
All right, go ahead Dave.
What's the expected value of issuance two? Can combine two A and two B, I'm just kind of curious, I don't know.
I do not have that number off the top of my head, I wouldn't, wouldn't, I would hesitate to give you a full number, but we do have an estimate for the entire package that we can get. We can have Nicholas to provide some information on that.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if that was a question for you. And then the other, I think I know the answer, but the auditoriums are not sufficient in size for like all-school assemblies, those would still take place in another space, correct?
Yeah, not, an all-school assembly wouldn't be in there, certainly concerts, music events would be in there.
Okay, thank you.
We are, we are scheduled to?
We are scheduled to get our next budget update from Nicholas in just a bit over a week.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, move on.
Yeah, one more comment.
Oh, sorry Brett, go ahead.
Because I don't know if we're going to be talking about this at the, at the committee the whole, so this would be my last opportunity to weigh in on this. I'm sure you'll be happy for me to be stopped weighing in. But we're going to be getting into construction really soon, starting this summer. And I just want, I think I've talked to a couple board members here, you know, school districts do have kind of external kind of construction advisory groups that engage their community in. I know of three individuals who have young kids, want to be engaged in the district that are actively involved in other school construction programs around Chicago that may be interested in being involved in helping out coming to facility committee meetings. I think it might be a, a good thing for the board to discuss with our administrative team, consider as we go into roughly three years of construction, it might be a, a different set of eyes on this, so. I, I think you, they may want to consider it. So, I know that might be a little bit of a controversial comment at this table, but I've seen it done a lot.
And Brad, are you volunteering to be part of that committee?
Sure, I could, if needed.
I'd put you on the spot.
But I, you know, my, my background's really more on the planning and design side, and so going into the construction side, like I said, we have three key individuals that are in our community, young kids, want to be engaged, want to participate, want to provide their personal time, that I think could be beneficial as a group, as an advisory group, to ask some of the more difficult questions or challenging questions to our teams that maybe you might not think of, so, just a thought. You don't have to make that decision anytime soon, but.
Thanks Brett. Any other questions? Okay. We're on to oral report.
Thank you.
Number two, the series 2025 general obligation school bond sale recap. Dr. Schuler.
I'm going to let Dr. O'Keefe introduce Bob, then he's going to come up for this.
A familiar face to the table and to the audience, Bob Lewis with PMA. Instrumental in supporting us during our planning for our first bond sale, the actual first bond sale that happened back in March, the closing at the end of March, and then he's here to give you a quick, quick recap of what occurred there, and then kind of a peek into what we are anticipating for this coming fall.
Well, thank, thank you for having me here tonight to recap the bond sale with you. And thankfully we have, we'll have good news to share. So as Dr. O'Keefe already mentioned, the sale was on March 3rd, and I'll show you the results of the bids here on the next slide. The closing was on March 25th, so that's when the bonds went into effect and you received your construction proceeds. The final maturity is in 2000, January 15th to 2041, so it's 15 payments. They are callable on January 15th of '34, so you have the opportunity to refinance or restructure them in the future if the, depending on market conditions or the need to do so. They are tax exempt, which means your investors don't have to pay taxes on the interest that you pay to them, which is what allows you to get a, an interest rate that's even below the rate that is paid on treasuries. And your underlying rating was double A plus by Standard and Poor's, which was a confirmation, the rating you already had, which was their second highest rating. And then last, rounding out this slide are the key players in your transaction, you have PMA as your municipal advisor, your bond and disclosure counsel is Chapman and Cutler, and the winning bidder, the purchaser, the underwriter was JP Morgan. So this slide shows you the results of the robust bidding. So the winning tick, tick again stands for true interest cost, which is a composite interest rate of the coupon rates on each maturity, plus the fee of the underwriter. And the, that rate of 3.55 compared to a 4.06% that was in the pre-referendum analysis. You can see that the district received a significant number of bids, I think that's 12, if I'm counting correctly. And very tight bidding, I think you see the first three bids were all starting with a 3.55. And even your last place bid was only 6.06% or six basis points higher, I mean, it's very tight bidding, which is indicative of selling into a very strong market to get all the bids so tight like that. So what are the next steps? We, somewhere around September, October, you know, dates aren't exactly set yet, there'll be an overview of the plan of finance. As part of that plan, we'll review and discuss any modifications to the structure based off additional information that is determined between now and then, but the overall objective will be very close to what was communicated in the referendum. And then we had the board authorize the sale to sell the next bond in either November or December, with the sale date estimated to be somewhere in February 26th, could be a little sooner, maybe January, we'll again, we'll look at market conditions at that time. And then the closing of that bond sale will be March of '26. And the timing of this is adjusted to accommodate your additional needs for construction for the projects that you just reviewed. So I will pause now and take any questions that you might have.
Pretty, pretty hard to ask questions about a result like we just saw.
I would agree.
Bob, if you, if you wouldn't mind just giving a little bit of information around the timing of when we're talking about the second issuance. Certainly the first part of it has to do with cash available for the project, but then we also have to fit it into a tax year too, correct?
Correct, yes. So, when you are voting on your operating levy, your deadline to file that is the last Tuesday in December. Bond issues under the statute, or under this, the statutes give you an extra couple months, you have to be filed by February of, the end of February of the next year. So that's why we had it scheduled there for February 26th. And that way, the documentation can be filed with DePage County to establish your new levy. When we structured the first series of bonds, we did it in such a When we structured the first series of bonds, we did it in such a way that the payment will decline to make room for the new payments on the new bonds. So it's important that we achieve a sale by that date so that you don't see the payment drop offs and then we have to raise it back up by hitting the next levy year. So, we don't anticipate you would need to sell any sooner based off the construction needs, so it's why we targeted around that time. Again, like I said, maybe we'll come and suggest a January sale date, but I wouldn't think it would be much different than, you know, January, February timeline.
Any other questions, board?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for having me here tonight.
Appreciate it. Our last oral report is the CAC feedback about the cell phone cell device policy. Dr. Schuler.
So, we have worked with your HR Policy Committee as we've been simultaneously navigating through this feedback process with the CAC this year. So I submitted a memo with this oral report. I'm not going to read through the entire memo because the, the board had it, but I just want to summarize the key elements that I think will set up what we anticipate coming to the board at your next regular meeting, which is actually policy in alignment with, with this feedback. So, background, there's obviously been lots of discussion around the country and certainly in our area around cellphone policies. It was an interest that the board expressed early in the year to have us spend time with CAC exploring and researching this topic, and so it's what we did. In the second part of the memo, I've just captured our current language. I think two things to note in our current language. Well, while we've always been consistent in staying this, the language is actually found in two different places in the handbook. So, at our elementary and middle school level, there is a statement under kind of general portions of the handbook. And then in all of our handbooks, there is currently the same language under the, the student discipline section of our handbook for prohibited student conduct. And so, I do think one of the challenges that we've, we've recognized is that the language around expectations of cellular devices kind of scattered in a few different areas, rather than probably consolidated in one good, consistent statement, just something that I anticipate that, that we'll address. The research feedback, our feedback that we did this year started early in the year with looking at some, some research. Candidly, the research we looked at with CAC not only talked about cellular devices, but it did talk about technology use in general, much of what Mr. Spencer talked about earlier just in recognizing differences between active-passive technologies, but, but phone use. So we started with that, asked CAC to develop questions that they wanted to ask in response to that research, both who they wanted to direct those questions to and what those questions were. They developed a list of questions for students, list of questions for staff, both teaching staff, our mental health staff in the buildings themselves. We took all of that feedback, captured it into a document, clearly identified for CAC that the feedback we wanted them to be ready to provide after we went through the feedback session were the three options that I've identified in the memo. Option one kind of being make no change at all, leave everything as it is. Option two being more what we would classify as more minor adjustments, but perhaps clarity in the document itself, or option three being kind of a broader macro level change, which would have the biggest impact at the high school level where currently there is more flexibility around access to cell phones in the, in the day. So we laid this out at the front end, just so as they were considering the feedback, they were thinking about those options because that's what we asked them to come back to at the end. Our board student ambassadors were a tremendous help in helping us to capture the student feedback. So they took the questions from CAC, went to their buildings, used a combination of survey tool as well as some focus groups to capture feedback, collected that in a document, and they all joined us at a CAC meeting to share that feedback with members of CAC. Spread out across the tables, walked through the information that they had gathered, and then engaged in a very thoughtful discussion, just fielding some of the questions that members of the committee had. The next meeting, our high school staff joined us similar fashion. They, again, had done a, a survey of all of our high school faculty, gathering feedback around the, the topic, presented that information, and also engaged in a similar question and answer session that included both some teaching staff and administrative staff. Following that last discussion, so again, over a course of really three different meetings, from research to question to the two different discussions, then members of CAC actually considered those three options that we laid out and what I've provided for you in this memo, both quantitatively, is the feedback that they provided. So which option they chose, nobody chose the option of leaving exactly where we are, option one, which I think by law may not be an option in another year, but regardless, nobody selected that. You see kind of the distribution of their responses between option two and option three. And then I've captured for you some of the comments offered directly by members of the, the committee. We, again, brought this feedback, come back through HR Policy Committee to kind of at least share as we've gone through the, the process. I think the HR Policy Committee recommended that, one, we provide this feedback to you tonight just so you can be prepared, have time to review this, certainly ask any questions that you have about it. Our intention, based on direction provided, would be to bring a sample, not a sample, to bring a modified policy to you at your next meeting that would reflect both the, the feedback we believe we've captured from CAC, from all of our buildings, and kind of our, our thought process around the, the next step direction for us. So, we've been actively working with all of our administrative teams based on this feedback to review and work through some revised policy that, again, we intend to bring to HR Policy Committee at their next meeting to review and then back to the full board at your next meeting.
Thank you. Board, any questions?
Depending on what happens in Springfield, would that, based on your current understanding, would that push us to two or three?
Wouldn't pu, would push us to two or three. It would eliminate option one. I think one probably depends on exactly how the final language is, is passed. So what we have, what is the draft language in those bills? Those can always change as you get to kind of final negotiation, but I think it would push us either to two or three.
Does the language in those bills define instructional time?
Does not provide great specificity on what's considered instructional time.
Would we define that in our option? And the concern I have, and I discussed this briefly with Eric, currently, and I think some of our student ambassadors said this as well, when students are done with an assignment during class, they are then allowed to get out their phone and, and do that. So would that still be considered an instructional space or instructional time? Like, are we looking to have cell phones put away in instructional spaces or during instructional time? Like, I think there's a difference.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, it's a fair question, probably a pretty nuanced question. I, I think intention would be to define that inside of instructional spaces, which really the instructional time is happening kind of bell to bell, right? There is a practical reality that as students are in kind of like final transition at the end of a period, they're, if you're using a phone caddy, you're using a supplemental place to store. Students have to have enough time to go and gather that device out of there. So, to, to say like they couldn't touch that device until bell rings and class is over is probably.
I wonder, I know some of the feedback we've had from communities is that they really want their student to have it in their backpack, their, their phone, their device in their backpack. I think if we had the rule, like, no use of your cellphone in instructional space, it, it, there would be no reason for it to be out of the backpack. Like, I'm not sure that the pockets would necessarily be necessary if the rule is it's out, teacher sees it, she can, he or she can take it. So that pocket thing may or may not, like, will that be defined in here? Because I know that the teachers want something consistent, and I think everyone wants something consistent. So, are we getting that far into like the details?
We are certainly exploring that and what, what we bring to you. So, so hang tight to the next, but yes, I think we need to bring enough clarity. What I would say even on the, the staff level is there's a desire to have clear direction and consistent direction as we've talked with staff. That does not necessarily to all of them mean it has to be exactly the same way in every building or across every department, but there needs to be a consistent set of expectations that are clearly understood.
Okay, thank you. And then I just want to share with all of you, so I had the opportunity to be at two of the CAC sessions, and it was very interesting because I think option two would allow us, like, no cellphone for high school level, no cellphone during instructional time and instructional spaces, but passing periods in lunch, the students can have their phones. And I thought it was really interesting because I don't remember which groups I was kind of walking around listening to all the different groups that you, great student ambassadors were in. But someone, one of you made the note that when cell phones started to be allowed in classrooms, they felt that they socialized more at lunch, because then lunch didn't become that time of like, kind of catching up on your phone and then, you know, social media. So I do have a concern that we would be going back to taking that social piece of lunch away because we're taking the phone away in the classroom, but then giving it back at lunch, so something to consider. I, I would throw out, you know, taking them out of the classroom and lunch, but they could have them during passing period. A compromise, right?
But that would be exercised during the HR policy process, right?
I think it's good to have some feedback of where, you know, everyone else is kind of thinking because we struggled in the policy meeting of kind of knowing what the thoughts are. For feedback, yeah.
Yeah.
I want to give some thought to that, but I'll send a note to Julie in advance. HR policy is tomorrow, right? I'll send a note tonight with just some initial thoughts.
My, my initial thought is it's easier to go, if we had, if we adopted either two or three, and we tested how that plan went, and we had to go to the other one. My guess is it would be, yes, would be easier to go from two to three because of whatever actions weren't working, as opposed to moving to number three and then finding out we need to relax it back to two, if that makes sense. So, whatever plan gets adopted, we're going to probably have to test it for a year or two. Doesn't mean we'll be able, have to make changes or be able to make changes. Let's just think about what that Plan B would be, should it not work out. Just a thought. I, I don't really have a strong enough opinion between the two of them to, to make any suggestion. I do have worries about putting, I've seen these before. You put them in a, a phone caddy somewhere in the room and 25 kids have to go get their phone and all congregate around one area, or maybe you put it in two different areas and then get out and go to their next class. You know, then you run into the who took my phone, that runs into an issue, so I like the backpack idea. It just has to be monitored by the teachers, but I really believe that the teachers and the schools have to make that decision. That's just my relatively loose opinion. I don't have a strong one either way, but.
For, for me, I mostly align with what Brad's saying. I do prefer option two. And I do also like the backpack, because then the phone is available if they need it. If, God forbid, we have some type of incident or emergency. So I do like them having it within reach if they need it. I haven't thought about what you just shared about lunch. My initial thinking when you say that is then make lunch like instructional time, just don't.
That's a great idea.
Don't, don't, yeah, they have to be in the backpack. But I don't feel strongly about that without really, you know, I'd want to know a little more about how that's perceived really from the, the students, mainly at high school. I, I'd, you know, I'd, I'd have it more restrictive at elementary and middle.
I think elementary and middle school, the option two for elementary or middle school is phone gone, like, phone out of sight from bell to bell, I think.
Yeah, okay, so that's good, yeah.
So high school is kind of where.
Yeah, so I kind, I mean, based on what you just said and the feedback that, that seemed to come from some of the ambassadors, I kind of like that, but I don't know, you know, I'm flexible on that, so. Don't mean to be wishy-washy, but.
Go ahead, John.
I would expect that we'll need to come up with a plan and then tweak it as, as we see how it works. I'm, I'm looking to our administration to, to guide us on that with the feedback from the students, the teachers.
First of all, I'll bring my bag phone, right? At least somebody got that joke. Thanks. What, my, my preference would be, we're not in the classroom, so the voice of the teacher to me would be the baseline. And then I would build agility into it, that is the parent lens and the student lens. But I'd start with teachers as the baseline. I don't know if that helps you, but.
I think the teachers want something consistent. They don't want to be the, the one making the decision. And I think the students also need that. They need to know, well, in this class I can use it. It, it needs to be consistent across the board. I think that's what we need to put in place, so I don't.
So all I'm saying is that to me, the, the, if I were to prioritize one voice, I'd prioritize the teacher voice. And then I would build flexibility in where you can to, to address community input, parent input, and the student input.
I see.
That's all I'm saying. There's a priority there.
And, and I do agree with the thought of it should be a consistent expectation and not, you know, kind of across the district and across the, like, buildings.
One super tactical question for Jason. Can, can kids attach their personal device to our networks?
They get on our guest network, so, yeah.
Or if they have a hotspot, they can.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, they're all hotspots. I'm just thinking about the district level stuff, but yeah. Thank you.
One other thought I had, can you imagine 1,800 kids walk around the hallway, all looking at their phone for five or six minutes?
Maybe we should walk the hallways now. Maybe they look like that.
That's a fair point. Any other questions, board? Do you guys have the guidance you need? At least some?
I think so. I think the point I would reiterate is that this has been a very long process and we've had input from CAC, I think, on two occasions, and our student ambassadors. And so, I feel like we have a lot of information and are going to get a good recommendation to review tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Board, we're at reports from board members. Do you have any other reports you'd like to share? John.
During, since the last meeting, I've had the chance to visit with each of my adopted schools. And I also had a chance to attend the abridged version of Silent Sky at the competition. And I am very happy to say that the, the star of that show, if I can use that phrase, was Ms. Abigail Williams sitting back here behind me. She did an amazing job that, in that show.
Thank you. Any other reports?
Yes, a few things. I typically attend the ISB advocacy ambassador meetings, and there's often a lot of legislation in motion, but there were two items that I thought I wanted to kind of draw everyone's attention towards. Len also has weighed in on these ones. The first is House Bill 1358, which has to do with limiting school code waivers. I think this is something everybody should take a look at if you haven't already because it can have an impact on local control with regard to flexibility in our schedules for music, art, and other electives. I know ISB has recommended as individuals we consider filling out witness slips. Whether this is something we take a board stance on is something I think would be worth consideration given just the impact it can have on our ability to provide that schedule flexibility.
What's that number again?
House Bill 1358.
Thank you.
The other one is House Bill 2970, which can limit ability to manage employee misconduct. I think we all recognize that due process is very important for our educators. 99.99% of our educators are great people doing a great job, but I don't know that this bill that would limit our ability to manage employee discipline is necessarily in the best interest of the district. It's just a very preliminary send. of the district. It's just a very preliminary sentiment, but it's one shared by ISB and Lend, and so I think it's worth us looking at. Onto more fun topics. I had the opportunity to attend the Choral Classic at Wheaton Warrenville South. Obviously, a wonderful event from a performance standpoint, but what really struck me was the work the school community did to host a great event. I mean, it was a massive event, and the amount of volunteer labor that went into it was impressive. So the, the commitment to pulling that off seamlessly is amazing. And then I had the great privilege to tour Europe with the Wheaton North Varsity Choir as they traveled to Budapest, Vienna, and Prague. Again, musically wonderful, but the way the students represented themselves in our district as they traveled, I thought was especially impressive. I mean, just fabulous kids who really took advantage of the experience, but again, represented us very well abroad. So it was a fun experience.
I was, when I heard you were in Budapest, I was wondering what you were buying there, because I assumed you were there for work, so I'm glad you were there for pleasure.
I would say chaperoning is a mix of work and pleasure, but it was a generally good experience.
But you weren't there on a supply chain mission. I too got to go to the Choral Classic, and it just is impressive. I mean, kids from other states and schools as well, but just what talent we have. I, you know, our main focus was to see the Wheaton North Flight and also the, the, the group from South, and I'm escaping the names of the, theirs, and just, the talent just amazes me. We saw that last month, that Wheaton North with the, so...
Any other reports from board members? All right, we have four written reports in our packet and online, the monthly financial report, the Freedom of Information Act report, the board communication log, and the Citizens' Advisory Committee report. Topics for future discussion include middle school capital projects update. Board, are there any additional topics that members want considered for future discussion?
Brad's suggestion of construction advisory, I think, is worthwhile a future discussion. And then the other one is, in light of some of our dialogue related to the elementary school one-to-one devices, I think perhaps a future discussion of developmentally appropriate use of educational technology. So independent from the technology update, but maybe more in the social, emotional wellness space, might be a worthwhile topic.
Any other topics? All right. Our next regular board meeting will be on May 14th at 7:00 at the School Service Center. The board's next coffee will be this Saturday, April 12th, at 9:00 a.m. at the School Service Center. And our next committee of the whole meeting will be on April 23rd at 7:00 at the School Service Center. And then lastly, the board reorganization meeting will be held on Thursday, May 8th at 7:00 at the School Service Center. We will be moving into closed session tonight, so Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Opens Meeting Act, Exemption 5, ILCS 120/2, Part C, Part 1. So moved. Moved by Mr. Long, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Long?
Yes.
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 Yes. Our meeting is adjourned to closed session, but action is not expected following the closed session. Thank you.